2020 city council meeting?
How do we haven't gone live yet?
Okay.
I was waiting for.
The city council meeting. It's a pleasure to have you all here joining us tonight on this gorgeous night in Half Moon Bay. May we start off with a roll call, please Jessica?
Council member Reddick.
Do you say Reddick or Rarabak?
Reddick.
Here.
Council member Rarabak.
Yeah.
Council member Penrose.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brownstone.
Here.
Mayor Eisen.
Here.
You have a quorum?
All right, and then can we do the pledge of allegiance? Are we doing the pledge of allegiance?
We haven't been, but we can if you like.
Uh, yeah, it's kind of an awkward thing to do over Zooms all together, so maybe I'll just do it. We'll just, we'll just skip it. Let's go to a public forum.
Okay, if there is anyone in the attendees who wishes to speak under public forum for items not on the agenda, please raise your hand.
So just, and just so you know, while you guys are figuring that out, just in case you do not know how to raise your hand, I would assume most of you do by now. But if you go to the participants section, you can then, in the right hand corner of your screen, you'll see a raise hand section. So again, you hit participants down at the bottom and then go to right hand, raise hands on the right side.
Okay, first we have Brent Turner. Brent, go ahead.
Hello, good evening. Hello, city council. My name is Brent Turner. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of San Mateo Coastside COVID Response Unit. We're the folks that closed down the beaches on the Fourth of July. And we just wanted to make statement tonight and make sure that we're not normalizing the lack of our federal, state, county, or city response to the COVID-19 crisis that is currently ravaging our country and specifically the Bay Area. We managed to close down the beaches on the Fourth of July, but we have been, our leadership has been absent ever since then, and it is our position that this breach of duty toward the health and safety of the public is not acceptable. We've noted that the top 150 doctors, medical opinions on the COVID issue have warned that we must limit travel and personal interactions. But San Mateo County specifically, Half Moon Bay, is still not even enforcing masking and still not restricting our beach use here. The public has decided we have to hold someone accountable and will bring forward a petition requesting for the removal of Dr. Scott Morrow as the, from the county health, is our public health official. It's not that we don't think Dr. Morrow is a nice person or a good member of the community. It's just we find him unsuitable at this time for this particular position. We will follow up with signed positions demonstrating the support of his termination by the people of Half Moon Bay. And we hope the council supports this effort. The people do not accept the inaction of our representatives in our government, putting the community health and safety in what we consider to be avoidable jeopardy. And so I thank you all tonight in these tumultuous times for your work for the, for the protection of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent, and I appreciate all the work you've been doing on behalf of keeping the residents of this town safe. So thank you for your efforts.
Next, we have Peter Colagwano. Peter, go ahead.
Hi, this is Peter Colagwano. Thank you for the time. We live on Filbert Street, specifically the 200 block between First and Railroad. And over the past couple of months, we really appreciate the discussions with Mayor Eisen and Bob Nesbit and also Maz from the city. As you can appreciate, the neighborhoods around here around Poplar Beach have a lot of challenges such as traffic, parking offenders, urination, trash, drunks, parties, visitors without masks, et cetera. Our particular concern and request has to do with safety and traffic abatement on Filbert Street. Unlike Poplar and the rest of Filbert, our block does not have a four-way stop sign at First and Filbert. And as a result, not only have residents been T-boned at the intersection due to poor visibility, but in the current environment, we really do fear for our kids and pets because of vehicles easily reaching 50, 60, 70 miles an hour as they speed down Filbert to get to railroad, to get to the beach, or to circle around, you know, multiple times looking for parking. And so we realize you guys have a lot of things on your plate. The traffic assessment on our street may be scheduled, but that may be delayed due to budget personnel and queue of other activities. We just want to voice our concern as a block that in this climate, you know, please don't delay, you know, some of the acute safety issues, such as a lack of speed abatement on Filbert. We've got six children under the age of seven, including our own son who's five, as well as a lot of pets. And, you know, it's probably a matter of time until someone gets hurt based on what we're seeing on the block every, every day and night. So just like to advocate for, you know, prioritizing something like a traffic, traffic assessment for that intersection to try to slow down traffic, just like what's been done for Poplar. So again, thanks for all your efforts. Thanks for hearing me out.
And Peter, thanks, thanks for letting us know. Thanks for joining the meeting. And then I believe we all received your emails as well, at least I have. So I appreciate you communicating in such an open way. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, we have Edwin Ferran. Edwin, go ahead.
Edwin, you might be on mute.
Here you go. Is that better?
Yep, we got you.
Great. I'm gonna make this short because I believe you have my written comments in your packet. The gist of those comments was to implore you to ratchet the urgency about the traffic issue on, particularly on Highway One. Your current planning regarding coast side circulation does not really address safety issues in the unlikely event of a major catastrophe. And so it's also advocating that you affect a more to blame on traffic increasing development until there was a comprehensive plan developed by, you know, all the agencies involved, the chamber, other stakeholders. Well, the next evening after I sent that email in, I get hit by a flurry of high wind gusts, tremendous thunderstorm, lightning strikes, the likes of which we haven't seen here in a long time. And add to that the extremely hot weather, the crush of traffic. We had to make things for exactly the unlikely event I had warned that we were not ready for. The weekend traffic didn't thin out until after 10:00 PM. There was only a few short hours before the wind, thunder, and lightning kicked in. So I just, I'm not a mystical kind of guy, but I kind of took that as a sign that we should really be thinking about the worst case scenario. And because if it happens, we're going to be regret, we regret if we didn't move ahead earlier. That's all. Thank you for your service, all of you.
Thank you, Edwin. Yeah, and we did receive those comments. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Steve Patrick. Steve, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for your service. I sent my stuff to Jessica tonight. She said she had some problems getting through to it. I live here at 1836 Cabrillo Highway North here in Half Moon Bay, near Venice Beach at the PUD area here. I live near some horse businesses. I moved here because I like horses. And maybe one day I'll be able to get one myself, but there's some issues that have to be dealt with first. Over the weekend, last weekend, I put up signs to keep people off the backyard. And I've sent quite a few, you know, enough information. It looks like we were gridlocked, you know, in two hours, you know, when the Venice Beach flag went up. And it was about, I'd say about 11:30, everybody was stuck completely at a halt. And so I have sent a solution here to the city council that I would appreciate they would look at. It's a proposal. And it's related to the vehicular and the non-vehicular use here in Half Moon Bay. And specifically, I'm looking at this area, it's 200 acres west of Highway One between Pillar Cidos Creek and Frenchman's Creek, going west to the ocean, passing the state parks. And all these city planned unit developments have been here since the 1900s. That I still am confused about the whole dunes project and how that's not, nobody wants that to be a PUD anymore. And it has to be something else now. I just don't understand. It seems like we have a problem with retrieval here of all historical and architectural information. Imaging is gone from what I understand and in the response I've gotten from the city. I've got a request 2021. I've asked the public release of these documents. And I'm dressing some of these documents myopically in my information. And I appreciate if you would go through them. But I'd like to address from a larger scale here, how to actually begin a new green future and sustainability here in this platform. And I want to address it tonight. And I want to kick it off and I am willing and 100% with the green sustainability for HMB. And I have sent my information out with my humor and forgive me. But I'm on board with, it looks like the state, county, and now the local and your website. So thank you so much.
Steve, thanks for sending everything. I admit I needed a dictionary to look up some of the stuff that you wrote out. It was, you're quite in depth. I appreciate it. You're educating me on quite a bit. So thank you.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
More? You know, I went deep, 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 deep. And then it's just out here, you know, I live here at the coast. So I dug a hole this morning because I wanted to plant something because I had some dry plants. And before I knew it, I was, I was doing something else and a gopher went sideways on me, filled up the hole. I was digging deep. And, you know, the whole purpose was to dig deep so I didn't have to, you know, you know, and put absolutely a wire there. So I'm looking at the specific wire here. And I say, these are the red flags. And we need to change our perception and add a new lens going forward. And we have to go back to the future. We have many people that are progressive in this community. Everybody will put for the effort. We just need to all work together. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Myla Jimenez.
I'm sorry, that will be Joaquin, the father. It's my daughter's, my daughter's name. Good evening. Hope everybody's doing well. As you know, the work that we've been doing here on the coast with our families in COVID, it's been tough. It's been tough with our families, you know, the resources that we have in the coast. You know, if you see the statistics, you know, San Mateo County in Half Moon Bay. It's a, it's a bit scary for some of us, you know, being out there. To, you know, providing for our families. And we've been in constant communication with the, with the county, you know, about resources and the 211 number to call, you know, for our families, and it's just not working. You know, this 211 is not working for our families. People have tried it. And if people have tried the number, they said, you know, if I didn't have a headache before that, before the call, I got a headache after that, after trying to make the call, making the connection. There's a couple of things that we would like to bring up, you know, I don't know if you, the people that need to go on quarantine. You know, places are offered over the hill in San Mateo, the hotels, you know, in, you know, San Mateo, Redwood City, some of the areas, you know, we would like to propose and I brought this up to, you know, to Don Horstley, supervisor Don Horstley, by using one of our local hotels, you know, for people to be able to quarantine, you know, here in our community, in the coast. You know, we're talking from Montero to Pescadero, you know, being able to use a local hotel close to the family, places where they feel comfortable and like the resources are here. And also we know with that might be able to help, you know, our economy here in the city, you know, in our community. So it's just, well, also want to acknowledge, you know, all the support that we have received, you know, from the city of Half Moon Bay, from the whole coast, you know, from more, from city staff, from our city government, you know, to provide for families. As you see, we are ongoing, you know, food distribution, you know, every Saturday. Some of you who have witnessed that, we are receiving about an average of 150 families, you know, per Saturday. You know, and that's not including, you know, some of the resources that we provide during the week. You know, in the, you know, and all this is, you know, thank you to the support, you know, from community members and different organizations, different religious congregations that are supporting us. You know, but, you know, the resources that the county is offering, you know, for these families is not there. You know, we need more testing. We need to find ways where our family can actually quarantine. As you know, the living situation with some of our families here in the coast. So please, you know, if you can actually reach out to the county, you know, and they know, and make sure, you know, you follow up with, you know, many meetings that we have with them, you know, requesting more testing, more resources, easier way of getting the resources, you know, they will really appreciate that, you know. And like I said again, thank you for your support, you know, and we actually acknowledge, you know, our community. Thank you.
And Joaquin, great work. Thank you so much for doing all that and trying to keep our hotspots down in Half Moon Bay. Very much appreciated.
Excuse me, mayor. I do believe that the city looked into local hotels as places for the homeless and or quarantined people. And my understanding is, and Bob, you may know the answer to this better than I do, but my understanding is that none of the hotels were willing to give up space. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Penrose, early on, that I think is going back probably three months ago. So in the earlier stages of the pandemic, when there was a lot less known, that is essentially a true statement as the county was trying to get their arms around the challenge and decide what facilities and how much they needed to ramp up. That was the message we got back from them was that the hotels here, and they all shut down at that time. So that was right after they shut down. The message was either that those were not centrally located enough or that they were unwilling. And so that was the message early on, that like I said, was two and a half, three months ago. Possibly now the request is a more focused request. It, you know, at that time, the county was looking to buy hotels essentially. And so we were, we were talking a big endeavor at that point in time and do, and take regional action. So this, this might be a more focused request and now that hotels are open, but they're not at capacity in terms of just having space. I don't know, something we can look into. And I also will note that on city manager's updates, which is coming up shortly, deputy city manager Chittister is going to make a short presentation about some of the research and work he's doing in this exact area.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have more, more information forthcoming to everybody to discuss this topic.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
That's what I have for you today.
Yeah, cool. Thank you. No, great, great comments. Jessica, I think, is it Belinda next?
Mayor, I think we may have lost Jessica, the ownership meeting.
No worries. I'm gonna, very good, Matthew. I will take over then. Belinda, I believe you're next in line. And if you're not, and I'm skipping over somebody, I'm sorry, but can we move to Belinda?
Mr. Mayor, I think with Jessica off, there's more to allowing someone to speak. She actually has to queue them up. Okay, and let me, at this point, let me just make an announcement, a general announcement, if I may, Mr. Mayor. So I don't know if we lost Jessica because she had a bad internet connection and she's going to jump back on. But we won't, we're planning to announce, is Jessica on? We were planning to announce at the beginning of the meeting that due to potential power outages that we've all heard about. Our city clerk, Jessica Blair, lives in Napa. She's also close to a fire that has broken out. It's possible she was going to lose her power. She is the host of this webinar. And so as a host, she brings other tools that others don't have and we could lose the whole thing. So if we do lose the whole meeting, we have a backup plan. And we ask everyone to wait a few minutes and then log back on because we will move to the Plan B and make someone else the host. I do see Bridget, one of our planning analysts online, that was part of our Plan B. If Bridget has taken over control of the host duties, then until we get Jessica back, I think it would be proper to have Bridget do the public comment. You can still call them, but she has the ability to unmute them and so forth.
Excellent. Well, let's, let's try that out. Great, great, great segue, Bob. Thanks for giving us the update. So Bridget, is there a way for you to give Belinda the microphone at this point?
If Colleen can give me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm right here. Let me go ahead and switch Bridget over.
You can find, find me over there.
Yeah, no worries. Take your time. No rush.
I'm assuming that part, that Jessica probably did lose her power. It's amazing we didn't lose the whole meeting, but we didn't. So let's cross our fingers.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been talking, so.
Yeah, she, she was prepared for this. So, all right, Bridget, best of luck.
All right. So currently, let's see if we can now switch.
Okay, so now I just, I just became the host. Love technology here. Okay, so let me get back over to attendees and I'll help you guys out. And we finished with.
Perfect.
All right, so next is going to be Belinda Arargia, and I will go ahead and allow her to speak.
Perfect. Belinda, you're up.
As soon as she unmutes.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Okay, super great. Technology works. Thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to start by saying a huge thank you to the city of Half Moon Bay staff, to the city council, and to everyone that's come together to really help our community during this critical time. I've just been so really proud and inspired to see the work that's being done on, on, on behalf of ALAS. But it really is a community effort. We're, we're on the front lines, but it really is being fueled by the city and so many members in our community volunteering, sharing, you know, donation support all around. So it's been really an act of love to see what's been happening during COVID. And we're just really grateful to be able to be community partners with everyone. So thank you, first of all. Thank you, city council, for supporting us for the grant that we received and the work that we're going to be able to do on behalf of our community and continue. We are seeing an increase in our food pantry. Joaquin's taking up 450, I believe, bags of food a week is what he's getting out into the community plus 150, we had 160 this week. We started with like 120. So our numbers are going up. And we did, we, you know, actually looked at how many in a family we were impacting. And it's over 500 people that are getting support from just the Saturday food pantry. But in that process, thanks to Victor, who's there with us every week. And not just there, but really active and on the ground with us. And so we're so grateful to city staff to be present, but we're hearing the stories. We're getting, we, last week, we got 325 incoming calls from the community in one week. And this week we got 265. So every week we're averaging, you know, quite a number of calls coming in with families sharing stories and what's happening. And we are getting the crisis calls when they happen. So we are able to say that there is a concern about getting more resources here in the community in terms of housing for families that are in, you know, multiple family housing. We really need to protect, you know, further spread. So being able to isolate, and it's really hard. We, we were working with a few folks and it's really hard when you're in the way over the hill and far away to be able to get, you know, the support, like we're trying to get them food and get them resources, make sure they're okay. And there's just a sense of, of kind of comfort, but also I think an easier approach to be able to get them closer to home. Having said that, I also would like to see if there's a way that we can get a little bit more support from the county to be able to have more education in our communities. I know thanks to Ziamata and the behavioral health team, they were, and our team got together a Facebook Live this Sunday and to Karen, thank you Karen, they did a great job. Jose did an amazing job. But I do think there needs to be more education support and testing. That's another issue which I know it's everywhere. But I think a more coordinated approach from having city pressure to the county might be a little bit needed at this time because we are seeing an uptick in cases. And also, as you know, as we see, like, I just want to point out that our community really is, the Latino community for sure, essential workers, farm workers. A lot of them hurting from months now that this is going longer. The economic support continues to be a huge issue and the need. So I just want to continue to reiterate that. But again, thank you for your support.
Excellent. Thank you for all the work you're doing. You guys are tremendous stalwarts in this community. I was talking with Jerry Hill about ALAS just the other day and all the work that's going on. And we're just, we're, it's amazing what you guys are accomplishing right now. So thank you for all the work.
Thank you, mayor.
Great partnership.
Thank you, mayor.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so next, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, all you. I'm happy to have you lead it. Perfect.
Okay, and next we have is Crystal Lynn from the Half Moon Chamber of Commerce. And you should be allowed to talk, Crystal.
Hi, thank you very much. I just wanted to reiterate that when the hotels were originally asked to allow for quarantining of people who needed a place to stay, it was literally within days of the shelter in place being put out there. And most of our hotels were in the process of massive layoffs. And they didn't feel that they could support COVID cases because they didn't have staff and they didn't know.
Could you turn on my light over there, Brandon, for help me? Sorry.
Somebody might need to be on mute. It might be somebody's, Colleen maybe, but just FYI.
And so they had no idea how long the shelter in place was going to happen, what taking in COVID cases would mean for their hotel. And currently, any hotel that's open, if they were to take in COVID cases, they would then not be allowed, from my understanding, to take in visitors. So there's a lot that goes into it. And I just didn't want anybody to have a misrepresentation that the hotels were being jerks when they said they couldn't take in the COVID cases. There's just a lot to go in it and it could very easily be a different conversation now. But the hotels were not trying to be mean. Thank you.
Crystal, no, thanks for the clarification. And there's always at least two sides to every issue. So I appreciate you supporting and giving us some feedback on that. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Stacy McCarthy.
Hi, council. This is Stacy. Thank you so much for making space for open comments. We are representing coast side families taking action. We are seeking an item that we don't see on the agenda tonight, which is the follow-up to the law enforcement subcommittee that we spoke about in June. And we had written to the city council and heard from three of you. Thank you so much. We understand there's an effort underway. We just don't know what it is and we'd like to learn more.
Very good. City manager Bob Nesbit, do you want to talk about that?
Thank you. Great question. It is, there is an update on the status of that on the agenda. It's confusing. I apologize for that. It's under city manager update. It will be coming up shortly. It's in. It's under City Manager Update. It will be coming up shortly. It's entitled Law Enforcement Affairs Update. And this is the item where we, we plan to update, um, the council and the public on, on both tasks that were given to us. Uh, the Subcommittee and also holding a, a community meeting on policing. So we'll do that at that time.
Thank you.
Very good. And, and Stacy, thanks for following up on that too. But, uh, very good. You'll hear some, you'll hear all the follow-up and there's some great meetings that have taken place. So I'm excited for you to hear about it and then hopefully help us move forward.
Okay. Um, next person I have is Sue Renary. And she should be able to talk.
You, I sent a letter to Jessica. I don't know if it was received. So I'll just read it. Um, Dear Half Moon Bay City Council, every once in a while, there is an aha moment that just cannot be ignored. For me, that moment came on Saturday night when traffic was backed up on ninety-two past ten PM during a heat wave followed closely by a lightning storm never before seen on the coast. Given the heat and dry conditions, any area of the coast could have been begun to burn. The winds whipped up and, uh, could easily have spread a fire causing the need to evacuate quickly. This is not a stretch. We saw it in paradise. Had this happened, it would have been impossible to evacuate, given the number of cars already crowding the neighborhoods, Highway One and Highway ninety-two. Add to this situation a pandemic. The situation we find ourselves in is unsustainable. It's an absolute free-for-all in the neighborhoods, bluffs and beaches. The simple truth is there are not enough trashcans for the number of visitors. There are not enough restrooms for the number of visitors. There's not enough traffic control and police presence for the number of visitors. There's not a sustainable parking plan for the number of visitors. And there are very few masks on said visitors and no mask ordinance has a hope of being enforced, given the current staffing. We've been bringing this to your attention since the Memorial Day weekend and no meaningful plan has been put in place. Absent a plan and absent leadership, people do whatever they want to do and they are. To even think of adding to the current crisis in the form of increased development is ludicrous. We can't even manage what we have right now. You're not doing your part to protect the residents, the community, and need to focus on meaningful programs to manage visitors before making matters even worse with added traffic and congestion. Our future cannot rely solely on hotel tax. We need to figure out how to benefit from the current high volume of day use visitors, provide them with adequate services and manage parking and traffic. Sadly, the bulk of those cars blocking Highway One and ninety-two paid absolutely nothing for parking or beach access, but left the cost to picking up the, their mess to us. We're not reaping any benefit from the majority of visitors. Had the city received ten dollars from every car, it would add up quickly to a meaningful revenue stream. If the recently acquired twenty-acre parcel at Stone Pine could be used for park, for paid satellite parking with shuttles and bike rentals to get visitors to the beach, the city could gain revenue and stage cars at the entry to town. This would allow for more efficient and safe egress. Similarly, ala punkin festival, additional lots could be manned by local schools and nonprofits to generate more rev- revenue. If funding is the problem, we're completely missing the boat. Amazingly, this is not a standing agenda item. Over the summer, during this pandemic, council meetings have actually been canceled. You would expect this to be a time for more public forums and dialogue, not less. If this past weekend was not a wake-up call, I don't know what else we're waiting for. Please focus on this immediate issue and provide us with a plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Um, yeah, there's a lot there. I'll, I'll just, I'll just let it. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Okay. So that looks like it's, um, that's all I have raised hands for public comment.
All right, cool. If I may, I, I do have a couple of other logistical comments. I'll, I'll call them, uh, if that's okay.
Please.
Uh, so, well, first, on, on the first one with, uh, Jessica potentially losing her power, uh, awesome job to Jessica, Bridget and Colleen to have that Plan B in place. Hopefully Jessica will rejoin us, but, um, Bridget, great job. Appreciate that. Um, second announcement that's kind of related to that, uh, I, I see that John Doughty may be joining us. I wasn't sure. Uh, his house is also in jeopardy and under, um, potential evacuation order. Uh, so if there's questions that come up for our Public Works Department, our city engineer is here, we'll do the best we can. Uh, but I was hoping that John would take the night off because he has other issues right now. Um, and then related to the last speaker, uh, I should, we should announce, uh, I guess what, yes, what is definitely a change. It's really going back to the way public forum was handled, uh, pre, pre-remote, pre-COVID, which is, uh, we don't, you know, pre, uh, the changeover, uh, public comment was taken. Members of the public had to attend the meeting physically and make their comments. They could certainly read from a letter, but that's, that was the law and that was the way, um, that was the council's rules for that. When we switched over to remote, uh, as we were learning the technology and making sure that, um, the meeting was available as wide as possible and available to everyone by phone, um, by internet, et cetera, we did begin reading emails of some of the first meetings that we had using Zoom. Uh, we have decided to go back to, uh, the old way of doing it. And what we have done is if we receive emails where the speaker indicates they can't make the meeting, but they would like the council to get their comments, we are then attaching those emails to your packet. So you will see tonight, you should have received from Jessica a modified agenda with all the emails we received. So the last speaker who spoke, uh, Sue Renary, uh, sent a letter that was attached and then she went ahead and read it, which is fine. So I just wanted to make that announcement. And then finally, as we move into presentations, um, the Harbor District Wal- Water Quality Presentation is, has been postponed. That's also related to the fires. Uh, the person from the RCD who is going to make that presentation along with Jim Pruitt from the Harbor District is busy, uh, herself, uh, with fires that are currently going on in Santa Cruz County and San Mateo County. That's it. Thank you.
No, those are definitely pressing issues. So, uh, I was excited for that issue too. I'd done a lot of research on it, but, uh.
They, they asked for September, so we'll, we'll get that back on your agenda.
All right, cool. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, very good. Excellent work, Bob. Thank you for keeping us in line. Um, is there anybody else for public forum? It doesn't look like it from my perspective, but just want to make sure.
No, I don't see anything.
Very good. So we are on to proclamations and presentations, if there are any. And I don't believe there are from, but I just need to double check.
I don't see any.
Hey, it's Jessica. I was able to log back on, um, on the Zoom app on my phone with cell service. I lost Xfinity. I still have power, but Bridget's going to continue as host, but we do actually have four presentations. Although the first one is the Midcoast Council Update, but I don't see Claire on. So, um, if there's anyone else on that's providing the Midcoast Council Update, if you could raise your hand, Bridget will move you over.
Oh, perfect. It looks like, uh, Ms. Martin's on. Yeah.
No, 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 no.
No.
I'm Midcoast Council.
No, she's not.
Okay. So then we can move to Katie Martin, who's doing the, uh, Vector Control District Update.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Katie Martin. Um, I am your representative to San Mateo County Best Control, uh, Mosquito and Best Control Board and have been for the last eight years. And, uh, I am proud to be the chairperson this year and next for the district. And I'm here to bring you kind of up to date on what, what's happening with the district. Um, we started doing, um, Zoom meetings in March, immediately after, uh, the same place was ordered, uh, with all its attendant joys. Um, the most exciting thing that's happened at the, at the district is that we have a new manager that will be starting October first. Um, the present district manager, Dr. Tandy Peavy, is retiring after serving the district for about close to twenty, twenty years. And, uh, we conducted a complete executive search producing seventeen candidates. But, um, taxed us a little bit and found that the best man for the job was somebody that was already on board, our assistant manager, Brian Weber. We are very excited. Um, Brian's been with the district for over fifteen years. Okay. This year we received, uh, the district received, uh, an unusual award, one that we're very proud of, given our history. And that is from, or about financial reporting, is given to us by the Government Finance Officers Association. Very proud, uh, as I said, given our, our history with the fraud that we had. Very, very proud moment for us. We also have retained our District of Distinction and Transparency Certificate Awards from the California Special District Association. Um, I don't know how many of you know how the district is funded. It's a little bit different than some of them. When the district was formed, there was a fee charged. And then when the district went, uh, county-wide, uh, we began getting agglorm tax. But we still have that fee available to us and we are able to, if we think we need it, raise the, uh, amount that is charged by three percent every year. Uh, this year, as in many previous years, the board decided to leave the fee assessment as it was, uh, primarily, uh, because of the COVID impact. We didn't think that it would be a, a very good thing to do. In terms of what we've been facing from mosquito and vector actual issues, we had a banner year with yellow jackets. For whatever reason, there was, we've had more calls on yellow jackets than we had on mosquitoes and ticks. There are many, many ticks up on San Bruno Mountain. Just if you're up there, be careful. We have not detected any Lyme disease and we have had no West Nile, West Nile virus from mosquitoes in the county. However, Santa Clara County did detect some, um, during the last couple of weeks. And there was a, um, a coordinated controlled larva spray um, in the area where the two counties come together at Port Hola Valley. Appropriate, um, notifications were given to all the, all the people that, that live in the area and we think we have it under control. The board is fully staffed except for one position. Uh, if any of you have any friends that live in South San Francisco, that, that seat has been open for over a year. Uh, so if you know anybody, send them our way. On a personal note, I continue to sit on the Lafftoe Board as the special districts alternate. And I am again serving on this year's San Mateo County Grand Jury. I also sit on the Main Street Bridge Restoration Committee. Being busy apparently is how I'm handling the, the pandemic. As such, I hope you will consider my reapportment, which is scheduled for this year in December. And I would entertain any questions you have.
Wasn't it your birthday yesterday, Katie?
Uh, Friday. You had to bring that up. I was seventy-five on Friday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Good. Happy birthday. We won't sing to, we won't do the Zoom sing. Well, hopefully mosquitoes aren't carrying the, uh, the next virus. Uh, so we appreciate all the, uh, all the work you're doing to keep them out of Half Moon Bay. Um, and, uh, thank you, thank you for all that. Uh, I've actually learned quite a bit throughout the years of, of listening to, uh, the people that have talked about mosquito abatement and I've kind of made sure all my water is taken care of and turned over and all the various pieces. So, uh, I, I just appreciate learning about it also. Thank you. Uh, anything else? Anybody else?
I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much for all the work you do. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll see you in December.
So you, I think Bob had, oh, go ahead.
Nope, nope. I was just moving this along. Yeah, same.
Okay. Uh, I think Bob said the San Mateo Harbor District Water Quality Update was postponed, I believe. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So the next thing is the Regional Housing Needs Assessment mythology for the six, cycle six housing element.
Great. Hello, everyone. This is Josh Abrams. I will share my screen now. Let me get everything set up. Give me one second. Um, okay, great. Hi, I am.
You just had it shared, but now it's not being shared.
Oh, no. Okay. Sorry. Let me undo that. Share screen. Share.
There you go. Starting to live.
Okay, great. Uh, I just want to make sure when I, yeah, when I go ahead on my notes, it'll be good. Okay. Hi, everybody. I am Josh Abrams. I staff twenty-one elements, which is a collaboration of all of the cities in San Mateo County. We help cities with housing policy. So we're not advocates. We don't push for good policy, but if cities are interested or have to do housing policy, we try and make it easier for them to, to do that policy. We try to give them best practices. And then we'll do a lot of things like we'll do comparisons of what various cities are working on, or we'll write a staff report and let, let cities, let cities staff use it or adapt it as they, as they fit. Today I am going to talk about the housing elements. The agenda is, we'll talk a little about what a housing element is. This'll, some of you know this, so this will be a review for, for some of you. Talk about an overview, what's in a housing element or the elements of a housing element and the timing. And then we'll talk about some of the current things. There's a couple of real important pressing issues going on right now. I put, I hope it's okay with everybody, I put photos of children in because it's a good reminder of why we're doing this planning, why we're going through it. It, housing prices are really expensive in the county and in focusing on, on what we're, what we're trying to get out is, is sometimes helps us through what can be an arduous, arduous, um, arduous planning process. I'll start with the takeaway lessons because it's slightly technical. I want to make sure we all take it, get the important takeaway lessons. Cities, Half Moon Bay is going to need more high-quality housing sites for this housing element than past, the past housing elements. It's going to be harder, so we'll have to start earlier. Lots of community involvement is going to be really important. And working with neighboring cities is going to be the best way to, to get us through it all. So a housing element is a local plan that looks at, uh, that, that looks at what our housing needs are. In the end, it'll be adopted by Half Moon Bay and it'll really be focused on the needs and the goals of the city. It's a chapter of the general plan. So the general plan is the document that guides all growth in the city. Um, and so the housing element is the housing chapter of that. Unlike other parts, this is one of the big differences. Unlike other parts of the, the housing, other, other chapters of the general plan, that this part has to be a certified or approved by the state. Um, it's also one of the required parts that has to be updated about every eight years. So specifically housing elements, they'll look at the needs and the goals of, of the community. They'll look at policy directions, options, things to consider or do. They'll look at constraints to new development. But one of the areas that gets the most attention is they had to make sure there's enough land available for, for housing. Um, so after, after the city writes it or we write it together and adopts it, it's gets sent to the state for review and then gets, uh, gets finally, a final adoption and a final certification by the state. One thing that'll be, uh, a little bit different this year is there's a new state law that really pushes us to what, what they call affirmatively further fair housing. I know that's a mouthful, but what it really means is we have to think about how all our housing activities affect low-income and minority communities. So that might go, that might influence how we do outreach. If we're doing, if we're holding a meeting and we notice, uh, we're now charged with looking at who comes and figuring out ways of ensuring that the people who come really represent the Half Moon Bay community. And then also when we look at the sites inventory or the, the sites we're going to think about, we really have to look at how that again affects low-income or minority communities. Not advancing. Okay, there we go. The typical process is, it generally starts with local outreach. That'll occur throughout. There'll be a research and data gathering fees. Eventually we'll identify priorities and write a draft plan. Um, the, there'll be review by local decision makers, usually planning, commissioning, council. Then it gets sent to the state for a pre-review and they'll give us comments. We'll revise it if necessary. Then there's local adoption and the last step is the state actually certifies that it meets all the rules in the, in the, um, i- i- in the, in the statute. The housing elements, we'll do the timeline to do that. Housing elements are due in January twenty-three. We're here right at the beginning. There's two things that are out. We'll talk more about them later. One is the, the big picture housing need number for the region and the other is a, a regional plan. We'll come back to both of those. In the fall, we'll get a pretty good view, pretty, pretty good guess it was. We'll come back to both of those. In the fall, we'll get a pretty good view, pretty, pretty good guess of what the, what Half Moon Bay, what any cities allocation will be. We'll get the, for sure, we would know by winter 2021 that, what the number will be. But we'll know a pretty, there's usually not much changes between the draft and the final plans. Housing elements are due in January 2023, but there's really like between the, the, the local adoption process and the state reviewing it. It's good to, to really aim for the fall 2022 as the, as the deadline to finish it. A really important part of the housing element is called the, the regional housing needs allocation. This is where we make sure we have enough housing sites, land for housing for the current and future needs. So we'll get a number, the RENA, Regional Housing Needs Allocation. And we'll, we'll compare that to the, how many, how much land is available for housing in, in the, in, in the city. And obviously there, there has to be more land than whatever the determination for the, the need is. I'll, I'll say this now because I'm sure we'll, we'll get this question, but accessory dwelling units, ADUs do count for part of the site inventory. They count a little differently. Most of the site inventory is saying this land can be built for housing, that land can be built for housing. ADUs, just you look at past trends, Half Moon Bay, the production has increased a lot, but if, say it's, it's 10 per year. You multiply that by eight years. So you would then just take 80, you would just get a cap 80 additional sites. Planning on them being accessory dwelling units or ADUs. One of the challenges is going to be, there's a bunch of changes in how, in the rules for the site inventory. So there's going to be more scrutiny for large sites that's over 10 acres or small sites under half acre. So they really want these, the state legislators believe that these mid, mid-sized sites, the easiest to develop in. And also redevelopment sites or non-vacant sites are going to face increased scrutiny. You can still use them, but you just have to justify them more. There's going to be, they're going to look at them more tightly, more, more closely and make sure development is really going to happen. Part of this is because they used to, cities used to list sites that just weren't ever likely to develop. And the state wants to not allow that. They really want to make sure the sites you list are actually going to redevelop. Just looking at the, the last housing element, the city didn't have any medium sized sites and a third of the sites were were, were, actually it should be sorry, two thirds. A thirds were, were non vacant. No, that's right. A third were vacant sites. The, a third were vacant sites, which are what we want, but that means that two thirds of the sites, if it's similar to the last cycle, which it will be at least two thirds of the sites will, and all the, the non, the, the small sites will face increased scrutiny. Okay, I'm going to pause there before I talk about what's going on now because it's, it, it just give everyone a chance to ask questions if anyone has one. And then I'll pause again at the end, let other people ask more questions.
It looks like Harvey?
Yeah. I've seen this game played out for a decade now. In particular, I'm extremely concerned about affordable housing. We keep getting RENA allocations for affordable housing and we have built exactly zero units. So all this talk about vacant sites and where we could build is, from my perspective, irrelevant. The, the real problem is we not building what we've been allocated that we should be building. I wish I had a solution, but I just want to bring it out that it's, it's a lot of talk until we actually can build some serious affordable housing in Half Moon Bay.
And it looked like Councilwoman Ruddock.
Yes, so um. How is the RENA developed? Where did they get, what kind of data did they get from cities? And is it just available land or do the cities provide land use and zoning information? I, I know the city council hasn't contributed to arena, a discussion to date. How, how do the cities impact the RENA members?
Um, that's the second half. So I could go on now or we could just answer questions for anything else I talked about. And then I could answer your, you, you'll get, your question will be answered for sure in, in a few minutes.
RENA Mayor?
Joe.
Jill, yep.
Hi, good evening. I, I didn't get a chance to frame and kickoff and just welcome Josh to, to our meeting tonight. And he, he's about to dig into the RENA methodology for cycle six. And the reason why we thought this was good timing is because that process is not completed yet. We know council is interested in what's going on with this in particular. We, we heard from Councilmember Ruddock that we, we really need to be paying attention. And of course, we are through the 21 element process. That said, this is dovetailing really well with the development of your land use plan, which you're going to see at the end of September. Planning Commission is seeing it on Tuesday at public hearing. And this is where we are setting the table and, and really paying, and paying attention to this increased scrutiny over sites relative to the council's direction to staff based on community input. That good housing sites are those that are located in the town center in particular. And secondarily are that new class of housing that we've been working on for workforce housing overlay. So I'm going to let Josh keep going. I've, I've worked with Josh for years just so that you, you know, he's participated in, in supporting us through Berden Driscoll, through our 21 element staff group that we collaborate with, with all the other planning directors and housing coordinators throughout the county. And it's, I've even done arena trade between jurisdictions one time, which was really helped a, a few cycles ago with having the 21 elements group. When Josh is done and you have more Q and A about the methodology, I think that'll be great. And then I'd also like to let you know a couple more things about where we are with kicking off the housing element process. Back to you, Josh.
Sure. Why don't I go on and then we'll, we'll do more questions at the end. So there's three things go. Sorry, just didn't say something.
All good. Go for it.
Okay. Um, there's, there's three things going on right now that are really, that are important to understand. There's Plan Bay Area or the Housing Blueprint, the Arena Housing Methodology Committee, which is how A-BAG will decide on the number for the, for each city. And then what 21 elements is response to it. Plan Bay, I'll start with Plan Bay Area. That's a long range plan, a 30-year plan that imagines how the, the future might look. What infrastructure development, what policies might be placed and how markets, housing and commercial might respond. So it's kind of like a visioning exercise for the region. That's really important because it actually feeds into the, how the, the, the RENA number is determined. So the Housing Methodology Committee is, is the, is the group that, that decides what the RENA number is. It's a, it, in the end, it's, it's the A-BAG Executive Committee, but the Housing Methodology Committee makes a recommendation. San Mateo County has three representatives on it. I was until the lawyers decided I had a conflict of interest, so I no longer am on the methodology committee. But the, now we have Nell Seelander from South San Francisco and two council members that are on the, the, the committee. Also, the, the city provided input through a survey and provided up before the methodology committee, A-BAG did a big data gathering effort to make sure they had the latest information. So there's two things to keep in mind for how the numbers determine. The first is what the starting point is. If you're going to look at population or, or because somehow you need to, to scale whatever your numbers are. And so, so Half Moon Day doesn't get the same size as San Jose. So the starting point is going to be Plan Bay Area. And the, the numbers are going to be based on what the population projections in 2050 for Plan Bay Area are. And then the, the methodology committee has said that they want to use places with really good jobs and high opportunity areas, which generally means like good schools or low crime to, to determine who gets a higher share of, of RENA. The Plan Bay Area tends to favor growth in, in, at least in the draft we've seen so far in Santa Clara County. So in that way, well, Half Moon Bay, are we starting from a slightly less high number than other cities? And then both those factors, jobs in high opportunity areas play into Half Moon Bay not having a huge number. I still think it's going to be an increase, but not huge. So this is the, this is a map of what the state calls high opportunity areas. I, I was saying it's based on, there's a bunch of factors it's based on, but in schools and education, broader education and crime and health, there's all these data. But the, most of the RENA is going to go to cities with the high, in the high resource areas. And Half Moon Bay is in the moderate resource area. So probably not going to get, because of that factor, it'll probably go a little more to other cities. And then, oh, then the jobs, I don't have a picture of jobs, but Half Moon Bay is not job heavy. So that factor also won't, won't contribute to Half Moon Bay having a super high allocation. But the, there's, there's two parts to the allocation. There's what's the regional number? What's the, the number for the whole A-BAG region? And then what's our shares? So the regional number is like this, the big pie and then our shares, our slice of the pie. We know the regional number is, is 2.3 times higher than last cycle. So even if, even if Half Moon, if Half Moon Bay just had the same allocation as last time, percentage wise, it would be two and a half times, 2.3 times larger. But I think we'll probably have a smaller, even though the pie is larger, we'll have a smaller slice of the pie. If you look here for RENA five, the, the total number of, of housing units was 240. You can see the various income categories here. I think it's a big range because we, the methodology committee doesn't have a firm methodology yet. They will in the fall, but they don't yet. I think the number will be somewhere in the 260 to less than 500 range. So a less of an increase than other cities. Some increase compared to last cycle, but not as dramatic as, as other cities. Okay. So I want to talk a little about some of the implications, this and the takeaways. This is kind of, it's going to be a little more similar to last time, but a little more detailed. So more housing, more high quality housing sites needed. But Half Moon Bay probably won't increase as fast as, as other cities. There's still going to be an increase, we assume from last cycle. But it's not going to be the 2.3 increase that other cities, that the average city will see. Maybe it'll be a one, one and a half times increase. Just it's a guess. We don't know at this point. And then start early is really important, but the good news is you guys have already started. So you're, you're, you're well along on this. It, it takes a long time to rezone and, and it's, it's great to be, to be moving along. The RENA number is probably coming out in the fall. As I said, housing element should be finished in two years later, fall 2022 and are due January 2023. And then anytime there's a plan, lot, it's important to do lots of community engagement and work with the cities. And that's something that 21 elements is going to help with. The 21 elements gets very active during housing element time. There's six principles where, where, we're guiding our work here. One is to save resources and, and help cities complete the housing element in-house if they want. Make better products. So give best practices, help through collaboration and templates, an easier time getting certified by the state. We gave three options for cities. Half Moon Bay chose the, the highest option, which means we'll be working with them most closely. And that'll let Half Moon Bay with our help, working together, do it in-house. Start early. That's 21 elements is, is we're ahead of most cities in getting going. So there's lots of time for engagement and outreach and zoning. And, and then a really close relationship with A-BAG and HCD so that the region and the state to, to make sure all the products we do will meet, will meet their roles. In the next couple of months, but it, between now and the end of the year, watch for a lot of outreach work, outreach work and also helping cities understand their, the, the sites inventory. We're going to be working with a real estate development firm to do some analysis and see what rezoning was likely to produce actual change on the ground because that's rather than theoretical, just, just right, written on paper because that's the threshold that the state wants. And then we'll just, we'll help all the cities do their evaluation to see what they have now and how much more they need. And with that, we'll go back to questions. Thank you.
If I can chime in, I just want to reiterate what I said. You saw the numbers for low and very low income allocation. We haven't built any. So we can have allocations out the wazoo. The reality is that we need to actually build it. And as Jill says, the city council prioritizes building in the downtown core and these housing overlays. But I don't know what we can actually do to build real housing. It's all very nice to talk about zoning changes and, you know, the increase in the population. I just want to know if there's any realistic way that we can end up building serious affordable housing in the downtown core and workforce overlays. It's probably an unanswerable question, but I thought I'd throw it out there.
No, it's a, it's a good question to get out there. Curious to know, is it Josh?
Yeah. I would say, I, I'll answer it. I mean, you're, you're throwing it out there. I'll answer. It's really challenging because it takes a lot of resources. Half Moon Bay is not a super, the, the local government is not a super wealthy local government and generally, I mean, either the two ways you generally get affordable housing is when, when developers build a lot of housing, you require some of it to be affordable. Or you put a lot of public resources into building affordable housing. And I, I think it'll be very challenging to find enough resources to put into, to, to meet that entire need. I mean, that's clearly the goal, but I don't think I, no one can make money grow on trees. So it's going to be challenging, but I think a good housing element will hopefully feel realistic and will have good ideas about strategies that the city can do.
And Josh, real quick, and then we'll go to Debbie Ruddock. Are you, would you say that you're kind of working on putting us in the best case scenario situation from a zoning slash building perspective with Jill? To make sure that should funds become available, we are able to capitalize. That, that's a little bit more my understanding of what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can definitely, as we look at the zoning, make sure that there's sites that are really desirable for affordable housing developers. We can, we can give them affordable housing. We can give them bonus densities or an overlay zone. And we can also look for if there's ways of increasing revenue for affordable housing or having private developers do, do more to help contribute for affordable housing.
Very good. I'm sorry. Sorry, Debbie, Councilwoman Ruddock.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So first, how does the methodology or Plan Bay Area? When they're developing the RENA, how do they account for infrastructure constraints? So yeah, we pull a number out of the hat. Let's do 500 for Half Moon Bay. But what if the infrastructure doesn't support it? So where does, where does the infrastructure piece come in when you're generating these numbers?
The biggest place it would come in would be Plan Bay Area. Plan Bay Area looks really heavily at infrastructure and it doesn't assume cities will grow if there's no, no infrastructure there. That's part of why they really, they predicted a lot of the growth would be in Santa Clara County because there's a lot of developable sites and there's a lot of really good opportunity ones. So just the fact that we're using, that they're using that, that the Plan Bay Area as the baseline, as they call it, or the starting point for doing the estimates accounts for it to some degree. The, the, they, there are some factors that they're considering, which are more explicitly looking at infrastructure. But right now they're leaning towards looking at jobs and uh, I forgot. Sorry, jobs in high opportunity areas as the two, as the two major criteria. It's possible that the methodology committee could look at infrastructure more explicitly, but it is there through the Plan Bay Area.
Yeah, I would be interested in how they account for sewer and water infrastructure, for instance. Is there enough water to serve this level of growth? So my next question was, you talk about Plan Bay Area being the starting point. But are you talking about it more as an ending point? Is, is the number of the RENA? Like what our allocation is to build between now and 2050 is 2050 actually the endpoint? And we measure whether we, you know, achieved our goals?
No, it's, it's gets a little complicated. So yeah, 2050 is only the endpoint for the Plan Bay Area visioning exercise. Housing elements are eight-year plans. So what we, what the Housing Methodology Committee did was they looked at what their prediction was for 2050 and then scaled that back to eight years instead of 30 years. And then use that to, to adjust for population size basically. And then they used population size at the starting point to say what, what the, so, so they, they use population size to say all cities will, will grow by about 20% because that was what, what the, the big number for the region was. And based on what their population prediction is in the future, they would grow as if that was the trend line. And, but then they, they, they say, oh, but, but cities with good jobs or, or high opportunity areas will go faster. And ones with, with less will, will, we will expect less of them. Does that make, it's a little hard to explain. Does that make sense?
You, you're saying that we would be growing 20% between now and year eight?
If, if you were a typical city, uh, the, the average city in the region would grow a little under 20%. But the, the good news is it looks like if the methodology committee continues on the road that they're going down, that it would be Half Moon Bay's allocation would be less than 20% in an eight-year cycle.
Because you know, what about the fact that we have a, a growth management? Schema whereby, you know, we limit the number of dwelling units to that number, which produces about 1% of the population.
I think the good news is that, that's consistent with, there's a bunch of new laws about growth management plans. And the way your plan is written is consistent with, with those laws. And if you look at the likely growth of, of maybe 300 or so units, 300 something units over eight years, that should be within the, the, the growth caps that you, that you have. So I don't think unless, unless something happens and you get a much higher allocation than the tea leaves are pointing to now, your, 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 your growth management plan should, should be okay.
Uh, looks like Jill wants to make a comment in there.
Yeah, thank you. And so again, Jill Ikis, your community development director. Wanted to, um, let you know from your staff side of the table, how we participated in um, the data gathering that A Bag has done for this. And it's been, um, the timing's great because they sought, um, input while we were developing the build out analysis for the land use plan. And that includes both a 2040 planning horizon as well as a maximum through theoretical build out. Now this isn't, I don't want to get too deep into that because this is not agendized and you are going to have that in, in a full form in a public hearing very soon. That said, we were able to, to send in, um, site information for each, um, part of town, including information about constraints as well as the measure D 1% annual growth limitation and the half percent growth, um, allowance, uh, for a bonus amount in the downtown area. So the data that we submitted is within the realm of what, whether it, it would happen or not with the economy. It is doable from the perspective of adequate sites, adequate water supply, adequate sewage capacity. And we were real clear about constraints and the coastal zone limitations um, as well as our, our measure D requirements. So there's, um, all of those things that you're wondering about whether or not they took those into consideration. Those were all reported to them. And so I want to reassure you about that. I'm, I'm not sure what we're, what our number is going to be. I was happy when, um, Josh told me that he, he, it, it appeared that the math was going to be such that the, the towns in San Mateo County, when San Mateo County has its allocation, it needs to be divided up, that the towns with transit on the Bay side of the hill should expect to be where infill should occur. Um, having planned in a town like that, we do, we do expect that. Those are the towns with priority development areas. Those are the towns that are, um, have been setting themselves up for, uh, the kinds of development that the, um, regional plan is seeking. So we would expect Half Moon Bay to have a higher arena, but see what the number is. Obviously Josh is presenting a really wide range tonight because he doesn't know yet. Um, but well, we will let you know the second that we, we get more, more information on it. But I did want you to know that there is some reality, um, base from your local planning shop that was committed to, to the regional agency.
And just for the city council to know, so I, I'm a representative on the city county association of governments. So all this information will be coming before the cities and the counties in that forum as well. So we'll, we'll be getting lots of information. Thank you, Jill. Really appreciate the context.
Yeah, good. And so Josh, um, I, we wanted him to just get to know you. And so just two more quick things. And I know you want to, we got to get you into your meeting, but the city has received two grants. Um, you already received the SB two grant, which is the one that's going to support town center planning. And, uh, sequel work for that. So that's our first follow-up, big follow-up item from our land use plan update, along with the housing element, we applied for that LEAP grant. That was one that, uh, council approved the resolution for that. I just got an email this afternoon that we are tentatively approved and we should expect our paperwork in a couple of weeks. And that is what's going to cover, um, our ability to have a, just about a fully funded housing element without any city general, um, fund monies with, with staff contributing, but we really want to continue with the work that we're doing on the land use plan, having this level of staff knowledge that we have right now. It's not a time to, to just hand the whole thing over to consultants. So, uh, 21 elements is just going to be perfect for us and, um, we're glad that you met Josh tonight and you can see how active this area is. And we appreciate very much, um, the words from Councilman. I just want to make a note of that.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you all. I look forward to working together.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great work. And I know this council in particular has been very much trying to figure out how to bring, uh, affordable housing to Half Moon Bay. Obviously there are many jurisdictions throughout the entire state of California trying to do the same thing. If it was an easy answer, um, it would be doable very easily. Obviously it's not an easy one. So I appreciate everybody's efforts to try to help make that happen. Go ahead, Bridget.
Okay. So I think the next thing we have is the mayor announcements of community activities, community service.
All right, I have none.
Okay.
And we'll, I'll, I'll go from here. Report out from recent closed session meetings.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, the council's not met in closed session since its last regular meeting. So there is nothing to report out of closed session meetings.
Cool. And then city manager updates, thank you, Catherine, and city manager updates to council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll kick this off. We have, um, four updates for council tonight. And the first one is a, is a general update on our response, um, to the pandemic. It does focus, it does read like it's specifically on face coverings. Uh, we did want to provide a link, uh, and that's what you see there on the agenda. That is a link to, um, the, uh, county order on face masks and fines. So we wanted that to make that available to the public and, and to the council. But this was meant to be a general update. Our intention was to focus on two subjects tonight. Uh, face coverings a, as a new mandate and, and what we can possibly do to implement that and, uh, and the fines that are associated with that. And then the second one is, uh, Matthew will give a short update. This was also requested by council and we had two speakers during public forum allude to it as well. And that has to do with the disparity, the, the really, the quite shocking numbers that we're seeing here in this county and, and statewide and nationwide with regard to virus transmission. As you look at income groups, groups and race. And so Matthew will, um, give some context and go into that a little bit. But before I do that, I just want to mention, we are following a couple of other crises in the making. So I'll go, go back and mention those quickly. Uh, as everyone knows, we have been receiving notifications of possible public safety power shut offs, PSPS. And so we have been monitoring that and getting quite updated, you know, information from PG&E as we go. What we understand at this moment is that there are potentially rolling blackouts going on around the Bay Area and in San Mateo County. But from what we could gather, it did not look like they were going to affect Half Moon Bay, uh, this evening. So we will hope that, uh, the meeting continues and that no one else will lose power. Uh, the second, uh, item that we're following, and you heard about this a little bit tonight already, are the fires that are occurring, uh, around the Bay Area, around the state. Uh, as mentioned, there's one in Napa and that had an impact on Jessica Blair, our city clerk. It looks like she's back on, but has limited internet service. And then there is a complex of fires. Um, I believe they started in Santa Cruz. But they have, uh, jumped over the county line and they are in San Mateo County. So we have been following that. It's called the CZU complex of fires. So we have been monitoring that, uh, both Matthew and Corey, our emergency, uh, manager have been in contact with the county. They've been in contact with Red Cross. We've been in contact with Saul and the sheriff's department just to follow what's going on. Obviously they're a long way from Half Moon Bay, but they are on the coast side. And what we know at this time is there have been, um, some evacuations. Uh, I have heard that Putano State Park has been evacuated. And, uh, I have also heard that parts of Loma Mar are either under advisory or have also been evacuated. So we're following that. Uh, I believe they, they're starting to, to, um, do things to set up possible evacuation centers in Pescadero. And we have just let, let, uh, our partners know that we are available to provide mutual aid if so needed, and we're just going to follow those as we go. And then before I get into face coverings, I thought since a, a speaker brought it up during public forum and it does relate to the, the bigger topic of our response to the pandemic, and that is the beach access issue. I thought I'd give a brief, um, update on that. And this item was a special study session before the council on July 21st. And at that time, I think the, the study session lasted about an hour and a half. But the summary was that we divided some of the takeaways or tasks or direction from the council into short-term, midterm and long-term. So I'll just give a quick update on some of the work that's progressed since then. So the short-term tasks, uh, I think are related to some of the comments we heard from the speaker tonight. And that was yes, in the short term, we can and should provide as much trash collection as we can. Make sure trash cans are in the right places. Make sure there's enough porta potties. Make sure the porta potties are being cleaned, uh, et cetera. And so that we continue to do, uh, it is hard to keep up with it. The speaker referenced the, the recent meeting and the crowds were enormous. But we continue to do those short-term tasks. Uh, we continue to amp up trash collection. We have worked with Republic to do this. We have stepped up the hours of abundant graces contract. And we continue to monitor the garbage cans to make sure they're collected up to the best of our ability. Uh, it's happening in real time on the weekends and with limited staff, it's sometimes it's hard to keep up with it. Uh, I did myself monitor our porta potties, uh, and their use at Poplar Beach. And in my anecdotal opinion, uh, they are sufficient. Uh, we have, I believe, eight porta potties there. And during the last five weeks, my observation is that they are kept clean, clean on a regular basis. And there does not seem to be a capacity issue. Uh, state parks obviously has several restrooms as well. Some of them they have left open. Some of them are still closed. But in general, there seems to be enough restrooms. Obviously not everyone is using them, but that is also hard to control. Uh, in the midterm, we, we said we'd concentrate on two things. Uh, the first was actually contacting the public health officer, which would lead potentially to a much longer task and the focus of that study session that day really was on the, uh, potential use of permit parking in the neighborhoods. And so the immediate task, which we really did in the short term, was to contact the public health officer to see if he would put into writing that in his opinion, there was a public health emergency specifically with regard to beach access parking in the neighborhoods, um, because the coastal commission indicated that that's what it would take for them to potentially consider permit parking. So we did do that. And Dr. Morrow, um, did not agree, uh, to make that finding or put that into writing. So we're just reporting that back to you. That does not mean that a permit parking program is not available still and is not possible. But as we summarized at the study session, there are numerous challenges, uh, with implementing a permit parking program. And that would definitely go into the long-term, uh, category of tasks. And then we also indicated that we would start mapping out a plan to stripe parking spaces, uh, in certain neighborhoods. Not, not where you can't park, not red curbs, but to use white paint to, to, to stencil Ts and Ls to show where, um, parking spaces should be. And in, in an attempt to space them out in a more appropriate way, so people don't park, um, in such a, um, crowded manner, let's say. Uh, so we have started work on that. Uh, we have nothing additional to report now. Uh, that is going to take some work by our public works department to put that plan together. And then finally, in the long-term category, uh, we focused quite a bit on, on parking management. And there was an acknowledgement that that effort would, would have to be a partnership with state parks. Uh, because they control, say, 80 to 90% of the parking spaces that are adjacent to the beach. And I will say that we've, we have some, some good fortune on that. We've made contact with the state parks. And in spite of our concerns that maybe they would, um, be busy doing other things or not initially willing to uh, have a conversation about working on this, they actually, uh, it was the opposite. Maybe they watched the meeting that night. Maybe this was something they were already thinking about on their own. But they have agreed to meet with us to start talking about, uh, a collective parking management program, which we'll find out how far they're willing to go when we meet with them. But it would obviously include the kind of technological solutions that we brainstormed, um, during the study session. So I wanted to start with that, just to give an update that it was not forgotten. Uh, we are working on that and it, and it will take some time to get, to get some of those items. Unless there's any questions on that, I'll, I'll move to the next item, which is an update.
Wait, wait, wait. Let me, let me just quickly just, just thank you for those updates. We're just real quick. Cause I, I know we've had a lot of comments on them from different members of the community. And, uh, I, I just think that the follow-up is so important for people to understand that we're not just throwing our hands up in the air. We are trying different tactics, different things, uh, finding areas where we have agreement with certain people, disagreements with others as we work with different members, uh, of the, uh, of the county, of the community, uh, of state parks. And I'm just very appreciative of the follow-up effort that you're reporting out. I just, uh, thank you so much. Cause I think, um, you know, we talk about these things and sometimes people go, whatever happened to it? So I, I really appreciate the follow-up.
Thank you for that. And, and it was prompted, uh, in part by the, by the comments the speaker made. So I will acknowledge that. Uh, we, we obviously felt we had a lot of other items on the agenda tonight, so, uh, we didn't specifically call it out. But we will always have, uh, a COVID-19 response plan update. That will, that will, the council asked for that to always be on the agenda. And anything under that umbrella is fair game, uh, for the council to ask questions about, for us to have a discussion about. And if there are specific items under that umbrella, uh, as there are tonight, uh, we'll bring those back. So the one, the specific one tonight that, um, was, was the hot item, uh, over the last couple of weeks, was the county moving, adopting an ordinance, an ordinance, an emergency ordinance to establish administrative fines for all of their orders, but also face masks. And to give some context on what the cities, uh, what the council's consideration was on this, going back to the earlier days of the pandemic, I think, uh, the, the, the council had directed us to start thinking about mandating face masks before we saw it countywide or statewide. Um, and then we, and then we waited as things progressed. And eventually both the county and the state did mandate face masks. And so we simply then, uh, were able to, uh, follow their lead on that. The counties, uh, was slightly different than the states. And as you know, at some point in time, I think it was in June, the county then completely aligned with the state. And from that point forward, um, was, was doing things in lockstep with the state orders. So we are under, if there's any confusion, and I know there has been on the county's order versus the state order. Uh, we are following the state order in San Mateo County, uh, when it comes to space masks and everything else. So what the county did though, was to change the manner in which, uh, enforcement could occur. Not following the order was already a misdemeanor, um, but the action they took was to make it an administrative citation. And their feeling And their feeling was that this would be an easier way actually to enforce the order. So this item went to the county on August 4th. And at that meeting, they did adopt an emergency ordinance to establish administrative citations for all the orders, but including face masks too. So and the ordinance, and the reason we decided to wait at that time and watch what the county was doing is their ordinance applies to the entire county, including the twenty cities in the county. So it does apply to all, but there's language in there that gives cities the flexibility to use it or not. But it applies to us, and it is there for our use. One key point to the ordinance that the county adopted is that a written warning must be given before a fine. So they did establish fines for individual violations of all orders, including face masks, a hundred for the first violation, two hundred for the second violation, five hundred for all violations thereafter. But before any fines can be imposed, they determined that a written warning should be given first. And if you read the staff report that accompanied the resolution and the ordinance that day, they did go into some detail of why they decided to go that route. And their intention was that enforcement would not necessarily fall on the sheriff and local police forces. There's actually even language in their staff report that acknowledges, with the current political climate of certain individuals in our communities, in the county, at a national level, not wanting to expand police and sheriff services, that this was done in a way so that non-police staff could potentially enforce. And so in the ordinance, they actually named specific positions at the county that could enforce that are non-public safety personnel. And they also delegated to the cities the ability to delegate certain city staff to do that enforcement, most likely code enforcement officers or positions like that, of which we do have one position. So that was intentional, and that was done that way. But at the same time, they also attached the mandatory written warning, and I'll get to that in a second. This ordinance also applied to commercial entities. And the fines vary from $250 up to $3,000. And the intention there was different, and they wanted to provide more flexibility for possibly more egregious violations, where a commercial entity might be doing something that was actually putting, you know, lots of potential people at risk, say, a restaurant, a store, et cetera. So I thought that was a little more ambiguous in the way they drafted it, but they did draft it up for commercial fines as well. So with that, we then put this item on the agenda to indicate what our recommendation was on what to do next and how to go about implementing what the county did. And I guess I'm here to say that we don't necessarily have an answer yet. I think the warning makes it very difficult for us to enforce. The warning, as I understand it, is county-wide. And so once a warning is given to an individual, you have to then track somehow in a database that that individual has received a warning. And that's difficult to do. It's certainly difficult if we're going to not rely on public safety personnel. The sheriff, as I understand it, can do that. They have a database. They can give written warnings. And then when they see someone again before they go to issue a ticket, they can check to see if that person has had a written warning or not. So there's still, you know, to be determined on that, but it would be very difficult for us to set up a system like that. I have checked with some of the other city managers in the county. And the ones I have checked with and the discussions I've had is no one has, no city has really advanced on implementing this order that was approved by the county yet. It seems to me, if there's any city that's further ahead potentially, it's probably the city of San Mateo. They are attempting to set up their own database, so they can read, their own police force can record warnings. And then they'll know when they go out and when they can start issuing fines. But their intention is to use their police officers to do that. Several comments I received from other city managers is that they have absolutely no intention of using non-public safety personnel to do it. So we're in the position where we're a contract city with the sheriff. We haven't gone into depth in terms of our conversation with Saul and his team on how they might do that. The county had indicated that they would come out with some implementation guidelines, potentially even some forms. We haven't seen those yet. And the sheriff had also indicated that they would come out with some guidelines, not only for the city of Half Moon Bay, but for the entire sheriff force or the entire county on how they were going to move to implement it. So it's still a work in progress at this point, but that is the update on the face coverings. I'm happy to take any questions before we turn it over to the next item under this agenda, this item today.
I'll jump in.
Yeah, go for it, please.
So I don't know if I like this idea or not, but I know that there are some cities, I think primarily in Southern California, that are employing consultant firms to do the enforcement. I know that one of the firms that they've been using is Willdan Associates. It's kind of like, you know, hiring mercenaries, you know, to go out there and ticket people. So I'm not crazy about it. But another reason I think this is problematic is just based on my own personal experience over these last several weekends with large beach turnouts. And that is, there is a lot of hostility out there. I don't think we can undermine the amount of hostility that's going on in the general public in terms of masks, no mask, social distancing. On a couple of occasions where I've just offered that I thought masks might be in order, you know, when I've been in the neighborhoods and by the beach and things, you know, I was vigorously verbally attacked in a very hostile way. And that was just a couple of times. And that was a couple of times actually over the last weekend, not the previous couple of times, but I've done it on other weekends uniformly bitter and hostile. So, you know, I think there's some, there's some threat and hazard to the enforcement. I hate to say it. And I understand why people want, you know, policemen to do it, but I think education still has to be a piece. I know one person said to me, well, the sign right here at Poplar says masks, you know, are not mandatory, recommended but not mandatory. So if it's recommended and not mandatory, a lot of people are just not going to do it. And while mask-wearing seems to be up, there's still a lot of people without masks. So this is, this is a real, you know, conundrum. People have just gotten very, you know, divided on the issue, and people are tired of shelter in place and, you know, limited contact, social contact with others. There's a lot of rage out there. I don't know how we get a handle on the masking, social distancing thing. I felt menaced. So I'm just throwing that out there.
No, there's energy out there right now, definitely. What about just signs? That are stating the, you know, we have some good signs out at the beaches now. I mean, what about just signs at the top of the pathways?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, good comment, and Councilmember Ruddick as well about sticking with the educational approach as opposed to enforcement. And so I think the two best ways to educate, well, three best ways, continue to put out communications through our normal channels, which Jessica and her team continue to do. And then the signs, as you mentioned, we do have some out there. Maybe it's time to shake those up. They start to blend into the landscape at some point. So maybe you, you know, get some new, fresh signs out there and mix up the font and the messaging. And then the third way, as Councilmember Ruddick mentioned, we're on as well, and I forgot to mention that. So thank you for bringing that up, and that is giving out face masks. We ordered, I believe, three hundred initially, and we have given all those away. And Jessica just ordered another thousand, and I believe we receive those today. So it is our intention to get those face masks out there. These face masks are kind of nice, and they do have, you know, the Half Moon Bay logo on it, or I think we've mixed up some of them. But Matthew suggested that we should also just get the cheaper disposable variety if we're going to do this, and really try to, you know, promote a program where they're all, you know, they're ubiquitous, they're everywhere. People who want to give them out and do it in a friendly way and aren't worried about the confrontation, of course, city staff can do it, and maybe use ones that are the cheap disposable ones as opposed to the ones with the city logo as well. So we're going to look at that.
I would not do disposable masks unless you want to radically increase the amount of trash pickup.
That's the thing. It's everywhere.
Everywhere, and it's not good. It's not good stuff.
Great point. Thank you.
You know, some of the communities, I saw some stories about communities like in Wales and different places. You know, they have mask trees, like on street corners or, you know, the library, public places, you know, the beach. You know, these structures that just host a lot of masks. A lot of people in the community make masks. So I think, you know, we have something like that, but I would really be, I understand the rationale behind it, but I think it creates, you know, a problem that's potentially just bigger, bigger than, you know, the one it's trying to address, so.
Great point. Thank you. We'll keep that in mind as we move forward on that.
Anyone else on that topic yet? I appreciate all that we can do on this one. It is, it is a tough. These are tough, because it's, we want people to wear masks. I agree with Councilwoman Ruddick in particular. I have, I have seen mask-wearing increase, which I am thankful for. It is not perfect by any stretch of the imagination, especially it seems like with this kind of like college-age crowd. It's almost kind of like people in the, I'm just going to make this up, but twenty-two, twenty-five, maybe twenty-eight range. I'm getting so old now, I don't even know how old they are. It's probably harder for me to know. But it seems like in that range that, in particular, don't seem to be wearing masks the most, is what I see.
They're also the population that's, you know, got the most positivity rates of late.
Okay. Anything else on that one?
No, Mr. Mayor. I'll move it on to the next one, and if that one was hard, this next one is excruciatingly challenging. And as you may know, and if you don't know, I'll tell you a little secret right now. In city management, all the most challenging projects go to the deputy city manager. So there's a little tip for everyone. Matthew?
Well, that also means that the city's in a lot of trouble. Thank you, councilmembers. Glad to be before you, and this is a tough issue, but I appreciated the comments from Joaquin and Belinda earlier to kind of set the stage for this. And they've obviously been great partners and leaders in the community in helping us address some of these issues. I did want to provide a little bit of context and background, just where things are today. The numbers I pulled today were twenty-two million cases of COVID have been identified worldwide since March, or since the beginning, so actually going into 2019. Five and a half million of those in the United States, over 600,000 now in California, 7,000 in San Mateo County, and over a hundred, I think the number, the most up-to-date count was like 123 in Half Moon Bay, and you can almost double that for the coast side. And as I was doing some of this research, I came across an article that I just wanted to share a quote, because it just really hit home to me on this. And it says, "A crisis hits society the way that it is, not the way that it wishes it was. And never has that been more true than the disproportionate impacts COVID-19 has wrought on Latino communities." And I think that that's what we're finding here. I think COVID has exposed a lot of issues and challenges for a big portion of our community that have gone either unrecognized or ignored. And it's time to face the reality of these challenges and step up our efforts to assist an important part of our community. So before you hear is the county's COVID-19 dashboard. If you go to the county website and go to county health and COVID-19 updates, they have a lot of really important data that's updated on a daily basis. I find myself looking at this on a very regular basis. And over the last couple of months, I've observed a trend, and we've heard about it from other folks. The Half Moon Bay Review published a really good article on this in early July. The county has addressed it a couple of times. And at your request, it's time for us to talk about it and make this information public and start thinking about creative ways to solve this problem. So you'll see, as I mentioned, the county has about 7,200 cases right now. And what's really of note is if you look on the left side of the page of eight cases by age group, and as our councilmembers just pointed out, you know, young adults seem to be the highest infection rates. But to the right there, cases by race, ethnicity, this is the most staggering statistic. Nearly fifty percent of our positive COVID cases in San Mateo County are from individuals who identify as Latino or Hispanic. And that's just those that are identifying. If you look at the bottom of that list, there's another 1,670 individuals that are unknown. I would venture to guess that a lot of those are also Latino and are just not reporting that data when they're identified. When you contrast this to the fact that San Mateo County is less than a quarter Latino, and Half Moon Bay is about thirty percent at the last census, and I suspect after this year's census, that number's going to be higher. That is a huge disparity, and it's scary, as was mentioned by some of our community members earlier, the prospects of that. I will say there is a positive within context piece of data here. If you look on the far-right side of the screen, the deaths by race, ethnicity, there's been twenty-three deaths of individuals identified as Latino or Hispanic. And at 3,500 infections, that's a rate of less than half a percent, or about a half a percent. That's good news statistically speaking, obviously, to the 23 individuals and their families. That's devastating still. But I think to this point, a greater tragedy has been avoided, and our hope is that we can continue to avoid that. There's a lot of complicating factors that have been identified locally and regionally on why Latinos, and really across the country, it's minorities and lower-income individuals seem to be at higher risk for infection from COVID. Some of those are identified as job types. Eighty-four percent of Latinos in the US cannot work from home. Individuals working in service industries, food industries, essential workers, it's really difficult for them to work from home. And then on top of that, many of these industries are not providing good enough sick leave and sick leave opportunities for these folks to be able to take time off to protect themselves. And so not only are they exposing themselves on a daily basis as they go to work to support their families, but even when there's a chance of being infected, they find themselves continuing to go to work because they don't have any alternative to provide for their families. Housing is a major complicating factor. You know, culturally, these are families that are family-centric. They live in large and sometimes multiple family units and multi-generational family units. You have grandparents living with their children and their grandchildren, and sometimes their great-grandchildren. And all of that within a single home or apartment leads to a really high risk for one individual is contaminated with the coronavirus, that it can be passed along to a large group of people. Language and communication challenges are always an issue in a primarily English-speaking environment. I think we, as a city and the county, work really hard to make sure that our Spanish-speaking residents are communicated with in their language and culturally sensitive ways. But it's not perfect, and it's always a challenge, and especially with such technical information being shared on such a regular basis, providing that communication and that information is really difficult. And then we've heard instances of misinformation being shared throughout communities intentionally or unintentionally that can create fear and resistance to some of the advice that's given on how to prevent passing this illness. Access to healthcare is an issue for anybody in a low-income category. Access to healthcare is an issue for anybody, uh, in a low-income category. Uh, San Mateo County does an incredible job of providing healthcare. Ninety-four percent of San Mateo County residents are covered in some way, shape, or form with healthcare. But those at the lower income levels, um, often still find it difficult to access that healthcare and use that healthcare to, um, really benefit themselves and their families. Latinos also tend to have a higher percentage of individuals with one or more underlying health conditions. This is, again, systemic issues around education and housing conditions that just lead to, um, chronic health conditions that can complicate things when people do, um, become infected with the coronavirus. And then, um, not surprising in our current, uh, national environment and the political world we live in, um, and and the origin of a lot of these individuals, there's a huge fear of government interaction, whether it's distrust of government because of past experiences or just fear of documentation status and accessing support and healthcare. Um, individuals are are fearful that that's gonna put them at risk for, uh, legal action or deportation um, or other, uh, concerns that would come, and 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 those are legitimate concerns. Uh, we we are surrounded by, um, people trying to strike fear into the hearts of, um, our immigrant population. And that really does complicate things when we're talking about a pandemic disease like this. Um, gratefully, um, you've heard today from, um, all us and our Latino Advisory Council. Um, they've worked really hard to fill a hole, um, fill a gap in providing services to our Latino community and provide that support to them that they need to get the right information and the right support. We know that all us, um, was way ahead of the curve in making masks and really set a national standard and a revolutionary program to make and distribute masks to individuals that, um, didn't have access to them, didn't understand the need for them. And by doing it, um, as a cultural activity, it really made a difference to getting masks to those that needed them. Uh, the county itself, uh, is incredible in its efforts to serve the population and is leading in so many different areas to serve um, all residents of San Mateo County, but especially, um, our our more vulnerable residents and our Latino communities and immigrants. Um, so they've really worked with the city and our nonprofits to provide a lot of Spanish-language outreach and communications about COVID. Um, they provided access to testing both through Project Baseline, which initially had some challenges, but, um, they recognized those challenges and opened up walk-in and other options for people getting registered, and that made a difference. Um, it didn't completely solve the issue, but it made a difference in getting more people tested. They've, um, done specialized testing for farm workers and their families, and in certain communities where there's an outbreak, um, as part of the contact tracing process, um, they've made, uh, testing, uh, onsite testing available to entire communities, and that's happened more than once on the coast side. Um, they don't provide a lot of specific information, but, um, they've they've done a lot of work around contact tracing and using, um, concentrated testing on, uh, neighborhoods and and communities to make sure that, um, anybody that these families may be in contact with are are tested and and assured that they'll be safe. Uh, the county works hard to provide hotels. We've heard about that earlier, and other safe isolation places when needed. Um, and and as you've heard, the housing situation for a lot of these families requires, um, really specialized support where some families, you know, they go to the doctor, they test positive for COVID, the doctor says, "Go home, isolate yourself in a room, stay away from your family, and order in food." You know, those are all reasonable options. For a lot of these families, that's not an option at all, and and they have to be removed from the home and put into a safe isolation space. The county's worked really hard at it. Um, to Chris Lynn's point earlier, uh, the contacts and questions we asked hotels initially were really around homelessness, and we're very early in on this process. Um, it was only three, three and a half months ago. It seems like years ago. To all that point, I think we will, as part of our response to this discussion here, is is go back to the county and to the hotel community and see if there might be some opportunities to to lock in some spaces for families, um, in need, um, over the next several months. And, uh, we'll work with Chris Lynn and the BID and the county to see if we can make something like that happen. Um, the county's also done a lot of work to provide food and, um, financial support to those who have to be quarantined and can't go to work or go to the stores, and of course, that's been supplemented through, um, efforts from local nonprofits, Coastside Hope, Allahs, um, the city's food distribution efforts, and, uh, really working to help those families. Uh, the county has provided some public health nurse nursing support to farms to go out and provide education and screenings. Uh, I think more of that is probably needed, uh, but that's some of the efforts that they've made. Um, supporting financially all the nonprofits and core agencies, um, both the county, the city, and our community. Um, those core agencies, uh, have and nonprofits are really the key right now to serving a lot of these residents and really, um, showing their worth to the community, and and we're so very lucky and blessed to have great nonprofits here on the coast that are really connected and and just going above and beyond to serve those communities. Um, talking about communication, uh, yesterday, Caron, which is a sheriff's outreach program, uh, specific to the Latino community. They provided a resource and information Zoom webinar to talk about all things COVID in in relation to the Latino community. My understanding was it went very well. There was over a hundred attendees, um, here locally. And, um, I'm hoping that we can work with them to sponsor more of those types of events, and if if that's effective, then that's what we need to do is is find those effective paths to to sharing this information and use them. Uh, obviously, the eviction moratorium and renter supports have been really key. We'll talk more about that tonight on a separate item. But, um, you know, many of our families are struggling. Uh, there's data that says at least fifty percent of Latino families have been e- either lost jobs or had significant financial hardships due to COVID. And obviously, the work around evictions and renter supports has been key to protecting that community. Uh, the collaboration between local government, nonprofits, and community leaders has been fantastic, and providing education supports to the school district is gonna be key. The county is making sure that there's internet access for students throughout the county and the coast side. Uh, they've really focused on Caprio Unified School District and sites like Moon Ridge to make sure that, um, everybody has, all those students have access as they've started school and, uh, remote learning here. And, uh, I I think this just all shows that there's a lot of effort and work being done to support this community right now. Of course, that doesn't mean there's not challenges, and 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 the data tells us that there are challenges, and we've heard from leaders in that community that there are still challenges. So I think culturally-relevant information dissemination is first and foremost the biggest challenge that we've faced, and we need to continue to work on. You know, families are are doing their best to stay on top of what they're supposed to be doing, but when symptoms arise or tests arise and somebody's positive, um, there seems to be a lot of loss for what to do next and how to get help. And again, some families, if you're working with your primary care physician, you're connected, they've got the resources, they get you what you need, and you know what to do. Um, when you're getting a test remotely, you know, through one of these remote testing sites or, uh, through a doctor you've never seen before, um, you may not have the support and and information you need to take care of your family. And especially if whoever's providing that information doesn't understand your individual situation. You know, telling an individual that lives with ten or twelve other people to go home and shelter in place, that's not helpful. That's actually probably the worst advice you could give a person, right? Um, so I think really culturally-relevant information is gonna be the key, and we'll continue to work with the county. We've engaged them on this. And, uh, working with our nonprofits who seem to hold the key to a lot of how to do this the right way is gonna be the important thing to do going forward. Another challenge we've heard is, um, information, communication similar from employers. You know, an employee tests positive and their employer just says, "Go home." Uh, again, not the right answer necessarily. You really have to understand the individual situation. So disseminating proper information to employers, especially those that, um, really employ a lot of members of our Latino community, I think is gonna be important as this moves forward to make sure we're getting people the right kind of support and the right kind of information and not just giving them the generic information that might work for a portion of our community. Uh, two-one-one, you've heard, that's the number you're supposed to call if you believe you've got COVID or if you've tested positive or need resources. And unfortunately, it sounds like when people call two-one-one with very specialized needs, they're not getting the help that they need. Uh, the language can be a difficulty, and so the county's gonna be making some changes there and working to provide more support, and we'll continue to advise and and help with that. Helping people to isolate and quarantine, I think the local hotels is an important part of that. Providing places for people to go when they've they're at risk or others in their household are at risk is gonna be really important. Uh, continuing to push for more testing on the coast and, uh, continuing to support economic struggles is gonna be the key. So, uh, none of these are solutions in and of themselves. They're all things that we'll be working with the county on. Um, and and I think it's gonna require the county, the city, and our nonprofits to really make an effort and and make changes in these areas that will hopefully make positive impacts in our community. Um, our numbers are not as bad as others, but, um, obviously, there is work to do and, uh, happy to take any questions or comments or discussion on this tonight. And I think this is something we'll probably be discussing as we move forward as well. Thank you.
Yes. Um, Matthew, thank you for a really excellent report. Um, I'm I'm very impressed with all the data that you've collected. I am especially happy about the, um, work that you're gonna be doing with our local hotels as as one of our, um, guest speakers or one of a public speakers mentioned tonight. If someone is isolated in a hotel over the hill, that makes it extremely difficult for them to have any contact with their family. Their family doesn't have a car, or they're working, and they can't get to the hill. It's also very disruptive to be put in, um, isolation, but in isolation in a different city is extremely difficult.
I'm wondering how that works. Suppose we did get an agreement from some of the hotels um, to provide space for people that need quarantining. Who pays for that? Um, the hotel is gonna need some remuneration. Is that correct? Is there currently county funding for that?
I I'm not sure. I know that when when individuals are being placed in hotels, the county is paying for it. Um, but to the degree and whether it's specific hotels or if we can line something up here on the coast, I think that all remains to be seen. And, uh, I I think that once we get commitment that we can get some of those hotel rooms, then that's the next step is to work with the county and our nonprofits to find the funding to support those families, because it's not cheap. You know, it's it's, you know, fourteen days usually is what you're gonna need. It's not just a couple of days. And for a larger family, it could be multiple rooms. So, um, yeah, it's it's not a cheap proposition, but it's it's sounds like it's the right thing to do for, um, protecting this vulnerable community.
Right. Um, I I heard, uh, from a couple of folks that there's a real problem with, um, getting their their hands on hand sanitizer. How's that? Um, the 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 lack of hand sanitizer, the ability to purchase it, um, is a serious problem. So I don't know if anybody's looked into that, but I've heard that from reputable sources that if there were a way to donate uh, hand sanitizer itself or funding for hand sanitizer, that that, you know, it's I've seen bottles of it going for forty-two dollars, you know, big bottles. So, I mean, uh, there might be someplace that sells it cheap, but, uh, seems to me that I've heard that from two independent people that we ought to be looking at. Hand sanitizer, that might be a way to, um, you know, help out families or larger groupings that have interaction, you know, to at least, you know, keep clean.
I I haven't heard that, but it's certainly something we're looking to. Thank you.
Matthew, um, I also really want to thank you for, um, putting all those pieces together. What it it seems to me that this is a looming breakout emergency of a concentration of COVID cases in our community that really demands emergency reaction. I mean, this is on our watch and the and the county's watch. And if we need, you know, money, if we don't do anything about it, and you mentioned schools as well, fifty percent of our school population is Latinx. So you could see this just simply escalating and escalating um, into a huge virus breakout situation right here where we live. So I advocate that, yeah, we work with the county pretty fast. Figure out who pays for what. If we need to use, maybe, you know, we could figure out if our house, some of our housing money is eligible um, to help provide in combination with county funds. I think we could probably get some other emergency funds available. But I really just can't imagine the consequences if we don't do something about it. I feel like we're already behind the curve, and we have to do a lot just to get even. I don't know if we can get ahead of this curve, because it's been going on for a while, right? People in dense housing situations afraid to go anywhere and not go to work. So, um, it's almost Kafkaesque to do more testing and then tell people not that they don't have any place to safely quarantine. So, um, so, yeah, any, I mean, any support or direction you need from us, please, whatever you need, and take other things off your plate, because this could quickly escalate into a very desperate emergency health situation here.
Doesn't the city get a per capita, um, amount of funding for COVID-related expenses?
Uh, we we do, and we've applied for it. I believe that that application's already been submitted. Uh, and then it's, uh, any any fun, any spending that we make between now and the end of, between March and the end of this calendar year, it's not a huge number, though, for us. Um, and and I think it may already be accounted for in previous expenditures. We may be spending that money twice over at this point.
I I do agree with one of the early speakers. I think Belinda and, um, you know, Joaquin, you know, that we we need to push the county where we can, and even if it's not quite in our wheelhouse. Um, you know, we should push the county where we can and push and push and push, especially for the reasons that Robert just mentioned. Um, uh, any anytime you have sort of a critical mass, uh, you know, the the consequences can be explosive. So, um, I think pushing is a really good idea, and I really also would like to say I really appreciate your presentation, and I think you hit, you know, all the key issues, and it's it's very complex. So I see that staff is wrapping their minds around it and doing a good job, and, uh, thank you for that.
I I have a question. I don't remember when the number of cases in Half Moon Bay was ten, but I think it was about a month ago. Am I off on that?
Yeah, no, it was it was over fifty less than a month ago. So it it I think we're 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 going back probably to April, March or April, actually.
Okay, so a month ago it was fifty and now it's a hundred?
I I I I didn't keep track of that well, but I know that we've, our numbers have been climbing over the, since probably May.
Yeah. Okay.
And without more testing, of course, we're not quite sure what the real number is, right? So again, it's this con- conundrum, I think, is a mild word almost for it, but, yeah.
Right. The more testing we have, the more the 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 numbers go up, and 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 I, you could probably tie the increase in cases identified to when the the Verity testing started showing up on the coast side.
What is the status i- in in Half Moon Bay in terms of the county's decision to do targeting um, testing in areas that were, uh, prone to outbreaks? I know they're talking about it in Fair Oaks and some other places, but I haven't heard anything about them targeting Half Moon Bay.
I haven't either. Everything I've heard from them has been about, um, the contract chasing, contact tracing. You know, there's there's, uh, someone is tested positive, they're in a vulnerable situation, and they'll actually go in and test a large group of people. They've done that several times here on the coast. Um, but proactively doing that, I have not heard. So we can, we can follow up with them on that as well. Um, and see if we can get some of the same attention that Fair Oaks is getting.
I think it'd be great if we could. We are fewer numbers, or percentages, it's quite high.
Yeah, Bob and I, Robert and I were talking about even looking into using some of our, depending on how things go and all the, you know, from a funding mechanism, looking at even housing funds, which I know are, you know, uh, kind of like off limits in some respects, but if we needed to work with that to get hotel stays for people that need to use hotels, um, to quarantine, uh, just looking at options that exist. Uh, so in the ideal, I'd love to see here some brainstorming, maybe Allahs, us. We kind of know what the issues are at this point, I feel like, a little bit. But what what can we do? And what are the funding mechanisms? And also I'm down with the county aspect of it. I've been talking with the county about funding mechanisms for this. I've been talking about trash. I've been talking about enforcement. There's a lot of issues I'm trying to figure out. As I know, we don't have the funding in this town to be able to support all the issues that are on our plate currently, especially with our financial situation. And we have to kind of figure out what we can do in all these areas to support, you know, the traffic, the congestion, the trash, the, the enforcement, the housing, the hotspot. So there's a lot going on right now.
And the idea of putting together reserves was for emergencies and being able to react to the emergency that currently exists with this epidemic. So that's why we got the reserve. So, yeah.
Okay. So I think, I think I would just say, I think Matthew, excellent work. I think the takeaway is almost similar to what Bob did at the start. Maybe we can start to figure out what we need to do from an actionable standpoint, brainstorming wise. So I'm, you know, again, just like everything else. And as I think the city manager teed it up, not an easy issue, not an easy one to solve in any way, shape or form, but what can we do, I think is the, is the next step.
Yeah. I think, and that's obviously the biggest challenge, but you know, we're up to it and we'll, we have the right partners with local nonprofits in the county. And we'll, we'll, we'll keep you updated as, as we move these efforts forward.
Good. Thank you for, thank you for all the work on that one. Anything else before we move on from that topic? Anyone? Just making sure.
Mayor Eisen, I do have somebody in the public that's raising their hand, but I'm not sure if you want to wait and hold off.
You know what? Let's just do it. It's not technically in protocol, but go for it.
Okay. I have Brent Turner.
Hello, City Council, and thanks again for involving the public on this discussion. There is a lot to address there. I just wanted to hit a few points. We're again making the statement of position that, that we feel a kinship in this moment, a very strange kinship with the current president, Donald Trump. I think we're over our heads here. We're, we're so far over our heads and it's not that I'm mad at any of you nice people. I think we just have to be honest with ourselves and, and follow, I think, the lead that is almost eking out from council member Brownstone that we're, we're in a pandemic emergency here and the niceties of, of good governance are almost our enemy here. We have to act swiftly and the county is not going to save us. Just like the state is not going to save us, nor is the federal government. We're, we're on our own here. And so the public is demanding action and, and we want again, to have travel restrictions. We don't want to have gridlock on the weekends in the middle of a pandemic. Now that we have also on top of it, obviously fires barking at our borders here. This is almost absurd. And it's not anybody here's fault, but we need to be very sensitive to not normalizing this any further. I know some of the council members have said that the public scares them when they are asked to wear a mask. The response they get is scary. Law enforcement can handle people like that. That's real simple. You give them a big fine or threaten them with some time in the gray bar hotel and they, and they cower. Nobody wants to do any time right now with COVID and nobody can afford a big fine. So it's all real simple stuff. On some of these levels, the other things are very complicated, what you're talking about. And I hope you can work them out, but we have to really move fast because we're out of our timeframe now. If we would have on 4th of July stayed in a siloed mode and followed those doctors' opinions and really done the right things as a state and as a local area, we would have been already on the other side of this thing. Right now we're losing this battle and the, the virus does not care about your county lines or your studies or anything else. It's going to do what it's going to do. And I think the problem is we're, and it's not just the people here, and we all suffer this, we're arrogant. And a lot of this stuff because we're not used to this circumstance. So I'm imploring you on behalf of the public to reconsider some of these positions. And, and we appreciate council member Brownstone reiterating, we're in an emergency pandemic here. And I think we, we need to be approaching the county and telling them, please help us and the, the governor needs to help us. We're, we're just outmatched here and it's nobody's fault. And thanks again for listening to the concerns of the public. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah.
So go ahead. Oh, yeah.
No, back to you.
Okay. Good. Is there anything else from the city managers reports? Perfect.
Yeah, I think we have three more items under city managers updates. So Bridget, we have a representative from San Mateo County Public Works that is going to speak on the Marata Road Pedestrian Bridge.
Thank you, Matthew. I was, I had muted myself. Yes, this was a request of the mayor and the vice mayor to have a presentation on the Marata Medio Pedestrian Bridge. As everyone knows, the bridge has been closed because of structural safety concerns. So there has been questions about how long the replacement bridge is going to take. And there has also been concerns expressed about the detour that people are using during the time that the bridge is closed, concerns about the safety of people going around and using Highway One. So the request was made to have the county come and make a presentation. So the Public Works Director, I believe he is here, Jim Porter. If not, his deputy director is here, Quavo. They made a similar presentation at the Mid Coast Community Council last week. And so I'm happy they're here to take your questions, take the public's questions and give an update on the status of this bridge replacement.
Quavo is on, there you go.
Yeah, Jim Porter's here as well.
Okay.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council. My name is Quavo, Deputy Director for Road Services, San Mateo County Public Works Department. I made a couple of quick slide presentations for you to give you a summary of where we are with the project. The first slide you see there provides you with a historical context of the bridge, when it was built, when the steel bridge was, was, was built to replace a concrete arch bridge. And when the different assessments, condition assessments were made on the steel bridge, as you can see there, the first assessment was done in 2013. And the recommendation at that time was to monitor, maintain and repair as needed. Further along in 2018, another condition assessment of the bridge was done. And the recommendation at that time was to go ahead and move forward with replacing the steel bridge. Between 2018 and 2019, a consultant was retained to design, provide design and environmental for the bridge replacement project. Also during the timeframe, there were a number of grant applications that we submitted to different agencies and different grant programs. As you can see, there are three of those were identified and they were denied, the grant applications were denied. Fast forward to July 2020, we had another condition assessment on the steel bridge by a structural engineer, one of our consultants is cornerstone structural engineer. They went out there and did another evaluation. And at that time, it was at the structural engineer's recommendation that the bridge be closed immediately due to safety concerns. And as you can see, the bridge was soon closed after that. The next few slide will show you some of the pictures of the current condition of the bridge. This is showing some of the pictures on the top deck. As you can see, the steel kickboards have been, are basically in disrepair. They're rusted, they're falling apart. The middle picture on the top shows a structural member that's already fallen. And it's no longer providing support to the bridge deck itself. The timber decking material on the right side of the picture, that's also rotted and it's, it's a safety issue. And that's one of the reasons why the structural engineer decided that it had to be closed. Next slide, please. And here's some pictures of the underdeck of the bridge. Those are the steel girders and the diaphragms that you see there. As, as you know, and most are aware, the bridge is, is made out of steel. It was, the material was called weather steel. And what has happened is because it is in the sea environment, the steel has delaminated. And in one of the pictures you see on the right hand side, where the, the hand is shown, the, the individual layers of that steel has peel off and it's basically flaking apart. Almost like a croissant that's flicking out. It's, there's really not much structural strength left in the steel members. And again, that's one of the reasons why the structural engineer recommended immediate closure of the steel bridge. Next slide, please. And here are some pictures from the different perspectives of the old concrete arch bridge. As, as I'm sure a lot of you are aware and have used this bridge, this concrete arch bridge is still falling apart. And there have been times when we received notifications that chunks of concrete has fallen down into the, the beach and sandy area. Next slide, please. So here is a image, an aerial image of the proposed detour that we're working with Caltrans on to provide a safe passage for pedestrian to go from Medio Avenue to Miramar Drive. The general idea is to close out both of the left turn lanes in the north and the southbound direction to be able to shift the southbound through lane so that K rails, concrete K rails could be provide as a buffer, as a safety area, so that pedestrian and bicyclists could use a shoulder and part of the lane to, to traverse in the southbound direction and get to Miramar Drive. In the northbound direction, the left turn lane is also proposed to be closed. That's just so that we can shift the lane and not allow any conflicts between travel movements in both directions. As you can see there, at the beginning, at the end of the K rails, there will also be crash cushions that will be installed as part of the safety function and safety feature for the K rails in this location. Next slide, please. This picture is of, look, if looking at south, in the southbound direction on Highway One. That's, if you can see the white dash, white line there on the right hand side with the pictures of the K rails. That's the approximate location where the, where the K rails will be, will be placed. Typically it will be anywhere between 10, excuse me, my screen is blanking out, between 10 feet to 12 feet. That's what we're working with Caltrans on to see what is the minimum requirement that they would need for the K rail and the pedestrian path through that area. There'll be some additional striping, some additional pavement markings to, to provide additional guidance for motorists to continue through this intersection. Next slide, please. So this is going to give you a brief status of where we are with the bridge replacement project. So as part of the bridge design evaluation, our bridge team look at four different options. The first option they looked at was a single span steel with protective coatings. The second option that was looked at was a concrete double span. The third option was the aluminum double span. And then the final option that was looked at was aluminum single span. The aluminum single span was selected because it's lightweight. It's also resistant to corrosion. And there's really limited maintenance that's required for the life of the project, of the bridge. And it does not need the midspan peer support. The single span steel protective coating, the reason why that was not selected was again, it would be a steel bridge, the maintenance that's required on that, that steel bridge would be very significant. And that's one of the reasons why it was not selected. The concrete double span, it was not selected because it would require a mid pier right in the middle of the Medio Creek. And that was not recommended due to environmental sensitivity issues. And the same is with the aluminum double span. Both double span bridges would require a midspan that would be anchored down in the middle of the creek. So both for that reason, both options were eliminated from, from consideration. The bridge project itself, the design is at 65% stage. We have submitted the permit packages to the regulatory agencies for review. So far, we have received three responses back from the three different agencies. And those are the California Coast Commission, Regional Water Quality Control Board, the Army Corps of Engineers and the California Fish and Wildlife Services. The only agency that we have not heard back from is the California Fish and Wildlife. We have received comments from the other three agencies already, and we're working with them to provide responses based on their comments and questions. We're anticipating completion of the design by December of this year. And then construction is anticipated to start. If we get all the permits from all the agencies, construction, we're shooting to start in April 2021. The anticipated construction duration is roughly 120 working days. However, the fabrication of the aluminum bridge span may extend the construction window, but we won't know that until we have the contract and start placing the order of the bridge. Next slide, please. What you see here is a, the 65% plans design of the proposed bridge. As you can see that this is the aluminum single span bridge. What might not be very apparent here is that the aluminum bridge is a little bit deeper than the existing steel breach, bridge. And by that, I mean, the girdle has to be thicker and deeper to, to provide the, the support, the loading that's needed for the single span that goes across the bridge. The bridge width is roughly 110 feet. And the width itself is the same as what it is now, which is roughly 10 feet for the travel path. I, this is the last of my slide. That was a quick and brief summary of where we are with the project. We had a scheduled meeting with Caltrans yesterday. Unfortunately, Caltrans had to reschedule that due to some unforeseen circumstances with their staff. Well, we had a conversation with one of the traffic engineers from Caltrans today on separate issues. But they did mention to us that they have been to the, the site where the detour is proposed. And they are in agreement with the county. They are in agreement and they have heard from all of the concerned voices and emails and correspond, correspondences that they have received from the community, the council, the Mid Coast Council and the various elective leaders. And they are very aware of the safety concerns and they, they acknowledge that they are working as best as they can, as fast as they can to provide us with a, a permit so that we can have our contractor start placing the K rails out there as a safety barrier. So a safe detour, a safe path could be provided for the pedestrians and the bicyclists, for anybody who, who wants to walk through that area. That's, this concludes the, the presentation. If I can provide any assistance, any answers, please let me know.
Yes, I'm wondering, it's Councilmember Penrose, wondering whether the county has looked at moving the bridge inland in view of sea level rise, which we know is going to happen. I certainly am a believer in it. I'm wondering why we are putting an, I'm sure this is not inexpensive, bridge back on the beach again. bridge back on the beach again. When that beach may not be here in 10 years.
Right.
Do you want to take it, Quad?
I'll go ahead, Jim.
So this, this bridge repair is, is, we understand it's not going to be there forever. And we have looked at relocating the bridge further inland. To do that though, it would require us to obviously reroute the coastal trail. But also acquire easements and, and possibly property from property owners out there to realign the bridge. So the plan is to replace the bridge at its current location. And, uh, you know, continue to explore an inland option because you're right. This is not a long-term solution.
I can par with.
This bridge.
Let's, let's, uh, let's, let's continue with Deborah Penrose and then Harvey will come right to you right afterwards. Go ahead, Debbie. Say it again, Deborah.
Yeah, I wanted to know what the life expectancy of this new bridge is.
The typical design aluminum bridge lasts anywhere between 30 to 50 years.
And the cost for it?
Our current cost estimate is roughly $5 million for construction inspection in full environmental and permit.
That seems like a lot of money for a long lasting bridge. When sea level rise is such an imminent thing. I certainly hope the county is looking at obtaining whatever easements are necessary and rerouting the county, the coastal trail to accommodate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Harvey?
I agree with Councilmember Penrose. This just seems like the inertia of continuing this idea because it's 65% designed is going forward, even though this, from my perspective, doesn't make a lot of sense. Realigning the coastal trail either on closer to Highway one or at Alameda. From my perspective, makes a lot of sense. It probably would not delay things much longer. The, the safety of the detour is apparently well underway, and that's a wonderful thing. But I think it'd be foolish to build this bridge in its current location. And I just go along with the, the idea that sea level rise is here. It's gonna get worse. It's gonna get to the piers of the, on the two sides. And it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me to rebuild in the current location.
And would you be willing to, and I'm sorry to put you guys on the spot like this, so I don't know if you can answer it, but would you guys be willing to comment on why you are deciding to go here as opposed to moving back? Or if it was a consideration, just to understand the, the logistics behind that or how much of a change, you know? People always tell me, oh, why don't you just do this? And they don't realize like the 10,000 things in the way of it that maybe we just don't understand. So I, I just trying to gain perspective. Well, timing for one. So we would need to start over. Basically, we'd need to resubmit all the permits. We'd probably be two or three years out there. Also, the property acquisition. So we don't have an aerial in this presentation, but there's two what we call paper streets or roadway easements that haven't been used yet. They're skewed across Medio Creek. In order to put a bridge in there, we're gonna have to buy some property. So we typically have tried to avoid purchasing residential properties for construction projects. That would need to be considered. The other option is to go down by Highway one, but I think that's going to require some property acquisition as well. So when you finally look at all the real property that would be necessary, it would be a long endeavor. We'd probably be having the bridge out for three to five years potentially, depending upon the negotiations on the real property. So we can either, you know, I, the, the expedient option was to replace it in place and then plan for the future. And that's what we did. No, that, that makes sense. That's, that's very, to me at least, that's very good information to understand, which I didn't understand prior to hearing you say it. So that's good to hear.
I, I have a clarifying question.
Please.
So when you say there's land to be bought, land to be acquired. Are you talking just for the bridge alignment? Or are you also talking about the rewriting, the rerouting of the coastal trail?
For the bridge itself.
Right. Okay. So there's, then there's the issue of the connections to the coastal trail. And you're, you need a new route to the coastal trail. And I'm guessing through that area, that's also going to involve some you know, acquisition of easement interest, at least, if not, you know, fee interest. So again, you're, you're looking at a much bigger project, really. You're looking at the bridge, you know, and the trail. So.
Well, I guess they're not looking at it. We're talking about it.
Right. But I mean, the cost to the taxpayer, the cost to the public. And the amount of grant money we would have to be seeking would be, you know, vastly more. On the other hand, if you package the bridge with a coastal trail, then you have a very fundable project, right? State parks, coastal conservancy, they're starting to look at it as more of just a safety, you know, remedy. You know, replacement of a bridge, they're looking at it as preserving coastal access along the coastal trail. So in some senses, it's more attractive for funders. Want to think about that. But I think, I don't think there's really much we can do at this point. I would hope that somebody's been thinking about that a long time ago and we wouldn't be here right now. But given the current situation, I, I would say being a project manager of coastal restoration projects, this project, this process actually looks somewhat compressed to me. I'm used to much longer processes for things. So I, I, I think this is probably the best we're gonna do in terms of speed of process. So that's just my, my, my two cents. We need a long-term plan, but it is a long-term plan and it has many pieces. This is probably the best solution right now.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And one thing that I did leave out was the public process in terms of rerouting that coastal trail. Because we would essentially be bringing that into a neighborhood right now that doesn't see thousands of people walking through their local streets. We would essentially take two cul-de-sacs and open those up to thousands of people. And it would definitely require an extensive public outreach process to do that.
And you might, you know, given this opportunity, when you're talking to your state legislators and funding agencies, like if you were talking to the Coastal Commission, the Coastal Conservancy, you say something like, um, I lost my train of thought here. It was about the outreach piece. Oh, you, you want to say a policy decision should be made about moving the coastal trail to accommodate sea level rise. There are a lot of people talking about that, but as we experience it ourselves, you know, it helps you to say we need to be looking at a much bigger picture here. How are we going to preserve, you know, our trail system in San Jose County along the coast?
Agreed. Good, good, good. Robert, anything on this one?
Nothing to, nothing to add. I'd also seen this presentation at the Midcoast.
Thank you so much. Yeah. So I, I just want to add, I've been, I've been getting some texts from some environmental people in my community and constituencies, the project managers. And they kind of are all saying in line with what Debbie Riddick was just saying, which is first of all, we need to make this project happen. The timeline for anything else is way too great. And I guess my only question even to relate to what I'm receiving there and what I'm hearing from you guys is you know, again, when we're putting in this bridge, are we looking at it from? Can you give me a sense of the timeline that you guys are generally, are we looking at it like? All right, we're putting this in and it's a five-year fix while we do the stuff that Debbie Riddick's talking about where we can package everything together? Are we doing it like 10 years from that? Is it like 30 years? Like what's a, what's a general timeline for some imbecile like myself that couldn't understand that stuff that far out? What, what, what are your professional opinions on that? Well, you know, a lot would depend, depend upon funding. So the county is funding this bridge. And they're doing it with general funds. We've applied, as, as Quad said, for several grants. We were unsuccessful. So for us to relocate the bridge, what we likely do is go through and look for grant opportunities to go through that public process to get that alternate alignment in. And then, uh, you know, go after a different bridge design at that time. I think practically, that's probably 10 years down the road, you know? We're hitting a recession here pretty quick. And unfortunately, the grant funders right now didn't look favorably at, at a project such as this. But you know, it's, it's something that's certainly on everybody's mind. It's just gonna be one of those very long projects. So I mean, realistically, we're 10 years out, maybe longer. Good, good. That gives me perspective.
Look at Land and Water Conservation Fund. So the federal government just approved full funding for the Land and Water Conservation Fund for the first time in many, many years. So there will be a per capita amount coming to the state of California, which can be distributed. You know, the counties and cities and things. I'm guessing that'll be, is available probably now in this new federal budget year. I believe the state has to take some formal action to accept its per capita share. So something to track.
Thank you. Okay. And Jim, and, and I'm sorry, I don't know if I can pronounce your name. Quad, sorry. Yeah. Thank you. Quad. First of all, thank you for presenting to us. I really, I really appreciate it. And also Jim, in particular, I, I've sent you a bunch of messages about this bridge and you've been extremely responsive. I'm very thankful. And I really appreciate you getting to Sam Trans and working on the, the right of way because you know, myself as an avid biker, our city manager is an avid biker. We, we're across that trail all the time. And it's, you know, it's, it's meaningful because I see what, what, what we're doing right now to get through that area. So I'm excited to see that change happen. I have a lot of constituents that are excited to see that change happen. And then my, my, my last question would just be, so in the future, for my own education and, and maybe for people that are listening, how do we, what should I have done differently to try to raise the alarm earlier on this one? It's a two-part question. And, and the second piece would be what can I do to help you with your last piece of, of approval process? From what is it? Fish and wildlife or whatever it may be? Is there any help we can do? Or is that just all on you guys and we just kind of wait? So again, what can we do to help sound the alarm for things we see in the county a little bit better? And then second would be, you know, what can we do to help facilitate the furthering of, of the implementation of this process? Certainly. So, so the first question, what you can do, I mean, feel free to reach out to me or to Quad or anybody. You know, in Public Works, if you see an issue that you feel needs attention. This bridge is kind of an interesting issue because that used to be a road bridge. And when the road bridge was taken out of service, that then essentially took away our access to gas tax, to road funds that could be used to replace that. So there was really no funding source for this bridge and you know, give credit to the Board of Supervisors in my category for coming up with revenue to, to replace this bridge. So that, it's kind of a weird situation, but I think to answer your question, please feel free to reach out to us. I mean, that's why we're here. We're, we're here to, to help you and the public and, and do what's right for the coast side, you know? In terms of the second question, you know, so far the process is working with the permitting agencies. If we do run into a problem, that's when we'll probably reach out to you. And perhaps any assistance we can get from the city of Hafman Bay would be, would be wonderful. Quad, do you have anything to add?
I think the level of communications that the agencies have been receiving from either residents or local communities have been very, very positive. And if they hear more from the, the council, the city itself, I think that's really gonna generate additional interest and help them focus on the application package that we submit in front of them.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's my hope. So yeah, if you, if you want us to get involved in any way, shape or form, just give us the addresses. You know how to reach us now. We're always happy to write letters and we have some, we have some gifted writers amongst this council group that can know how to apply some pressure.
Excellent. Thank you. We'll do.
Yeah. All right. I very much appreciate it. Again, as soon as the, I guess, what's it called? The the, the Sam Trans right of way that we're going to be building can be constructed. You know, I can't wait to get that information out to the community because they're very excited to know when that's done. So thank you.
Certainly. We'll pass that information on to City Manager Nesbit.
Fantastic. Anything else on this topic? All right. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you for present, for presenting and thank you for being a part of our meeting. And really thank you for helping our community get through this process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible to take a short break, five-minute break?
You ready? Yeah. Are, are you guys cool with that on? City staff? Yeah, yeah. So it is, what is it? 9:47. We're cruising right along. Let's go until 9:55. We'll take like a seven, eight-minute break and we'll start it up again. Is that good? 9:55.
Thank you.
Okay, cool. Deborah?
Yep, we have Robert. We're good.
We have Deborah back. Oh, good. Beautiful. That's we've got everybody from council. Let's start in. Mr. Mayor, I'll let Matthew queue up his staff for the next two quick updates. Excellent.
Thank you, Bob. We we will make these very quick. Staff is promised and I think they're excited to finish these and finish the first portion of the agenda with a bang. Corey Stalker is our management analyst in the City Managers Office who works on all things public safety, so emergency preparedness, OES, our law enforcement contract, animal control, all those things. She's obviously been very, very busy lately. But she is our lead in working with the city council and the community on law enforcement affairs, especially related to social equity and the Black Lives Matter movement. And she's going to provide a quick update on that. And then follow that will be followed up by Karen Decker and Eddie Beely from the City Managers Office and our Rec Department to talk about some of our efforts around supporting businesses, downtown businesses specifically on outdoor dining options and an event we have coming up. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Corey.
Awesome. Thank you, Matthew. All right, next slide, please. Perfect. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I have a quick update for you on our law enforcement affairs. So I wanted to do a quick recap. On June sixteenth, we had our law enforcement study session. During the study session, we talked with the San Mateo County Sheriff, Bonos, and our own Captain Lopez, along with the community, about our current law enforcement situation. We had a public comment period where people were able to express their concerns, express their opinions, and talk about law enforcement in Hafman Bay. A result of this meeting was our law enforcement subcommittee that was created. The subcommittee involves Councilmember Riddick and Councilmember Rarback. Another item that was clear that we had a need for after this meeting was that we needed more community outreach, and I'll touch on that later. To move our law enforcement subcommittee further, there was a need for more information. So the Deputy City Clerk Jonathan and myself were assigned a white paper study to provide the subcommittee that information. Some of the topics include the history of Hafman Bay law enforcement, budget sort of from twenty-two thousand five to about twenty-twenty-one where we are right now, comparison to other contract municipalities, and current events. The first meeting is aimed for early September, and in that meeting, we're going to go over the content of the paper. Next slide, please. So to address the other item, community outreach. Someone mute their. Thank you. Sorry. To address the community outreach piece moving forward, we've had the help of Councilmember Penrose to go through a few focus groups. We've had the pleasure of meeting with the Latino leaders, meeting with our Coastside Collaborative, as well as homeless advocates and services. We do plan.
I'll I'll jump in there real quick. Hey, can somebody, can can everybody? Can we stop the meeting real quick and everybody check whether or not you have your your piece on mute?
Mr. Mayor, it looks like everyone's on mute. Bridget, if you can double-check to see that everyone's on mute. As the host, you do have the ability to mute people. So if you can.
Yeah, just mute everybody.
Let me check. Hold on. Who needs to? You guys should be able to unmute yourself.
We did. Everybody muted.
Yeah, just just put everybody else on mute if you can, Bridget.
I think I think Bridget needs to mute herself as well. I think that was where some of the sound was coming from.
That's what I saw.
Sorry.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much. Sorry about that. So we had the pleasure of meeting with those two groups, as well as the Coastside Collaborative, and we continue to push forward and meet with the rest of the groups on this list, as well as discuss if there's anybody else that we're missing. So through these group meetings, we plan on having a citywide workshop or listening sessions. And we, while we feel that that would be best held in person, and I feel that there is a more meaningful touch with that, we don't want any of the momentum we've created to stop. So we do have, we're trying to come up with a tentative outline depending on how the COVID kind of procedures move forward and any necessity for safety and public health. Hopefully, with all of these items, the white paper, the citywide workshops, listening sessions, our focus group meetings, that we're able to have a future city council study session where we can discuss law enforcement updates. We can discuss future of law enforcement in the city of Hafman Bay. That's it. Any questions?
No, no question. Just a thank you for all the work that staff has done. It's a lot of work to to do this white paper, the focus groups. I'm really impressed.
Yeah, I'm really glad that Corey and Jonathan are on the on the the spot to get this done. I think it's a good team.
Yeah, I I'll just throw a thank, a thank you to our subcommittee as well for volunteering their time and energy to dealing with this as well. The the council members appreciate that. I'm excited we're addressing this and look forward to continuing the the talk, what we can do. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Corey. And now we'll turn the time over to Eddie Beely and Karen Decker to talk about outdoor dining and use updates.
Great. Thank you, Matthew, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Community. I'm going to bottom line a lot of my comments, just in the interest of time. So I hope you could forgive the brevity. So the city's been looking at different options for businesses in terms of potential new and additional outdoor space. And if I could just kind of bottom line why we've chosen a measured approach, I would boil it down to these two things. We did not want to make assumptions about what is best for businesses and what they need. And secondly, we did not want to expend resources needlessly. So if I had to pick two kind of guiding things to summarize my comments, I would say that those really informed our measured approach. So given that, we've been closely monitoring the changing health orders, as well as the implications on local businesses. And while we were doing that, we were keeping in a close communication with the Chamber and the Downtown Association, and of course, continuing continuing to engage with businesses on an individual level. And what we came to realize over the last weeks and months was that there was not one collective push for what businesses wanted in terms of support at the local level. So recognizing the need to do a deeper dive, we conducted an outdoor dining and retail survey at the end of June, early July, which yielded over forty responses in addition to the conversations we were already having. And I highlighted some of the statistically compelling things there. I was going to go over them. I think you've had adequate time to read the slides, so I'll take any questions afterwards if you wanted to do a deep dive in on any of those points. Next slide, please. So taking that into account, your community development department has been hard at work making options available for all businesses, be it restaurant or retail or personal care services. And here are just a few of those options. So very quickly, sidewalk use. This is commonly called an over-the-counter permit. It's intended to be very easy. There's no charge associated with it. It covers basic requirements like ADA, insurance, that type of thing. This is termed to end at the end of through December twenty twenty, so no permanent improvements. But we expect to set up long-term permitting if businesses express that interest. The second option, private property, as you saw in the last slide, there was a lot of support for use of parking lots. And so we are following existing code requirements for temporary uses. These can be approved administratively, in other words, streamlined pretty quickly, and requires a minimal charge, as well as some staff time and noticing that some improvements are being installed. It should also be said that there could be parking noise or other impacts on neighbors, so that would have to be addressed in that scenario. And then lastly, in the street is phrased generally on purpose because this is a a general encroachment permit. So just picture sidewalk extensions, what some people refer to as parklets. This is not in reference to anything that would affect a driving lane. So this cannot be over the counter. This needs engineering and other safety review. The fee will be as minimal as possible, and it does require neighbor notification. The degree of which hearing would be needed really depends on the application, so that would be handled on a case-by-case basis. Next slide, please. So in addition to permits, the city also recognized that most businesses support some version of a partial street closure. And we asked businesses which frequency they would be most likely to endorse. And the most popular choice was piloting an outdoor dining area over the course of one weekend. So before I turn it over to Eddie to provide details of that pilot project, I'll just briefly go over the goals and safety measures informing this event, which is scheduled to take place next weekend. So our goals are to provide a venue for takeout food options specifically for restaurants that do not currently have outdoor seating. But another goal or hope is that people who have a place to set their food down and eat may also shop retail or personal care services. So even though dining, you think restaurants, ideally, this would elevate all businesses. We would like to be appealing enough for people to stop and eat and shop, but we don't want to be so appealing to where people want to gather. We don't want to attract a crowd. We're not going to offer things like music. That is not the intention of of something like this. We actually want to do the opposite and exercise an abundance of caution. We also want to pilot a clean, safe public space for patrons to eat. And in that spirit, there are mitigations in place listed there under safety measures. So we're going to have hand sanitizing stations that are touchless. We are going to increase custodial services right there at the at the MacDutra Restrooms. You'll see a graphic in the next slide. And that will be occurring throughout Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We're going to in, I'm sorry, we're going to have staffing onsite who will be wiping down tables, accounting for spills. We're going to be closely managing managing trash and recycling in addition to the regular receptacles that are out there. And then Mr. Voe from Public Works County had mentioned K rails in his presentation. That graphic of that red plastic thing is a K rail, and that is a barrier that would be around the perimeter of the space to keep patrons and diners safe. Next slide, please. Okay, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eddie, who's going to provide some more particulars on the layout as well as sponsorship. Eddie?
Thanks, Karen. Good evening, everyone. Our partial street closure for outdoor dining, as Karen said, is to take place this weekend on the portion of Kelly Avenue between Main Street and Prisma Street, right next to MacDutra Plaza and our public restroom facilities. And again, we chose this location simply based on the input that we received from those businesses that participated in our survey. This outdoor dining area will be open for use starting this Friday, August twenty-first at ten AM, and will close that evening at nine PM, and will be open again both Saturday and Sunday from nine AM to nine PM. Our our layout for the seating area will be in line with the current county health order mandate for a group gathering size. So we'll allow up to fifty persons to be seated there at this event. People, I'm sorry, with each with each seating area being at least ten foot from every other seating area nearby. So we're kind of going a little bit further than is required right now for outdoor dining, just to be on the safe side. Next slide, please. And as you may recall, back in March, City Council did approve our sponsorship policy. So we're taking this opportunity to go ahead and run our first city sponsorship policy or sponsorship program. And we'll be allowing our local restaurants and businesses and community members to contribute to this event through sponsorship. And all of our levels of sponsorship come with varying levels of of benefits. And one constant in all the levels of sponsorship, their donors and sponsors will receive city council recognition at our meeting. So I'd like to go ahead and just list off those sponsors and donors right now. Thanks, Matthew. La Pati Belene, Friends of Hafman Bay Parks and Recreation, Garden Apothecary, Nonos Ohana, Hassett Hardware, Gourmet Appliance, Ortera Winery, the Coastside Adult Day Health Center, and Cafe Society. So we have some really great sponsors and donors for this event. We've actually accumulated nine hundred and fifty dollars in cash donations from our sponsors, which is really great. That basically covers the cost for all of our materials and supplies for this event, which were right around a thousand dollars for the three-day event. So we're really happy about that. We have some great sponsors and donors. We're really proud of the turnout we saw and invite all of you to come down this weekend and and check it out. With that being said, that's all we have for our update. If there are any questions.
No, I just would like to say I think it's a great idea, and I'm so glad that there is something fun going on in Hafman Bay besides all the awful things that are happening. That's great. Thank you. We needed this.
Yes, hopefully, outdoor dining will be a success, as it's been in many other cities, something near and dear to my heart. So I like to see people eating outside as much as possible, especially in Hafman Bay. And the weather has been so accommodating. So except for the the fires coming, so all in.
You didn't mention Jagger as a sponsor.
Oh, well, I, yeah, okay. I asked Karen, I said, should I mention that Bob donated a hundred dollars? Said, probably not. Colleen found out somehow, Bob, and and made Jagger the actual donor for your hundred dollars. So he gets the credit. Good.
All right, excellent. Anything else on this topic? All right, thank you.
An idea. It might be a place to hand out masks.
Already talked to Colleen. We're on it. Great idea.
Great.
Good, very good. Nice idea. Very good. Thank you, guys, for your presentations. Very thorough, very in-depth. Thank you for doing all that work. We're very appreciative. All right. Anything else? City manager updates the council?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. All right, we're moving into the consent calendar. Does any council member, I would, I I personally want to talk about an item one E. I don't really need a full report on that one, but I have some questions about it. And are there any other council members that want to talk to or pull a particular item? If not, can we? Oh, I'm sorry. If if not, can we entertain a motion?
You're muted, Debbie.
Um, I knew that we adopt the consent calendar. Item one A, wave reading of resolutions and ordinances. One B, warrants for the month of July twenty twenty. One C, treasurer's report for the quarter ending June thirty twenty twenty. One D, amendment to side letter with represented management team. Item one F, sewer collection system hydraulic model update. And one G, construction contract award for the twenty twenty sewer manhole rehabilitation project, CIP number nine oh two six.
Second.
Good. And then, I'm so sorry, Bridget, will you do the honors, I believe, at this point? Yeah.
Yes. Councilmember Riddick?
Hi.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
And Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion approved per motion.
Excellent. So real quick, I I item one E, I just wanted to, and I brought this up with Bob earlier when we did our our individual meeting. So my understanding is with item one, well, maybe Maz, do you want to do a quick, like thirty-second on what item one E is so we know everybody knows what we're discussing here?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just real quickly, item one E is is an amendment to our ongoing memorandum of understanding with Foster City. We entered into an agreement a couple of years back to purchase Rule Twenty-eight credits significantly for the for the undergrounding of utilities adjacent to that Hafman Bay library. Since then, we have continued to purchase agreements. We have two more years left on our contract. Given the, given the COVID nineteen-related economic impacts, we decided, we we looked at the op option of foregoing the twenty nineteen twenty credit purchase from Foster City, and that's what's being presented tonight. We just, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of points that. We just, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of points that regarding the rule 28 money, they do come with a lot of strings attached. I understand that the initial, the, the, it's not a one-to-one credit purchase. The purchase is less than a dollar for a dollar worth of credit. But there's several factors that to consider regarding the rule 28 program. One is that the CPU, the California Public Utilities Commission is looking at modifying that program. And in the communications that we've received so far, it seems like the funding will be utilized more towards non-urban areas, areas where there's a higher chance of fire, not fire damage to the utilities. And so that's what we've heard. There hasn't been any concrete decisions made. But that was one of the major concerns that we had as well as our our fiscal impact for the last fiscal year, given the COVID-19.
And so, so, so basically, again, my understanding is we're able to buy these credits from Foster City less than, you know, the dollar per, per. So do you know, is it 50 cents to the dollar? Do we know what it is?
It's 47 cents to a dollar.
So, so almost like half, we're getting, we're getting, so we're spending $25,000, but we get $50,000 worth of credit, basically. So that's, that's generally speaking, a very good deal. I like, I like getting two for one. Because I've been a big proponent of these credits and going after them for undergrounding. We do have an undergrounding project coming up on Highway One South. I assume those are already being used from a different?
Well, that, that was actually, I didn't mention that in the staff report, but that's, I'm glad you're asking that question. That project actually was deemed ineligible for rule 28 credits. So there's a lot of red tape that comes with those credits. And so that, and with the uncertainty of the Public Utilities Commission, it's a little concerning about what those credits could be utilized for in the future.
Interesting. Interesting. That makes it a little tougher. Which is interesting because I'm, I'm all for underlining as many power lines as we possibly can in Half Moon Bay. I think what we did at the library is absolutely fantastic. It changes the whole area. I think the, you get the better view of the mountains, a better view of the ocean, wherever you're doing it. The undergrounding is a, is a, to me, is just a huge success for the city from a, from a, an aesthetic standpoint, but also from a safety standpoint as well as you talk about fire danger and all the different things. So, you know, I had to ask the question because again, when I look at that, I'm kind of like, wait a second, we've got this great deal. We're spending 25,000, we're getting $50,000 worth of credit. I don't want to back off on that at all. But, but are you still of the recommendation that it makes sense to do so?
At least for the fiscal year 1920, this amendment would not change the next two years of purchases.
All right. Any other council members on that one?
I just wanted to say I share the mayor's concerns about that. So I'm hoping we can, you know, resume and put away a nest egg for some good projects.
Yeah, exactly. That's where I'm coming from. All right, very good. So I guess it just kind of is what it is at this point. We're, we're, I mean, because that $25,000 can't be of any significant substance to us as a city right now, is it? Per se, or we're not trying to save it for this calendar year just because of, of the, of the situation we're in, or are we?
This, this is related to the prior fiscal year, the 1920. So the 2021 purchase is not being amended as part of this.
So this is almost, I didn't catch that. So this is kind of like the 1920 year, I see. So this is kind of to make us whole from last year. Otherwise, we would have to put it in. Interesting. Okay. I missed that piece. All right, very good. Got it. So technically speaking, for this year's, we're going to be including it. All right, that, 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 that gets all the wheels moving. So we kind of needed to do it for, to make that balanced budget. I'm with it. Got it. I'm in. Anything else we need to do on this now? Good. In that case, can I make a motion or can somebody make a motion?
I move per staff.
I'll second.
Excellent. And Bridget, will you kindly do the roll call?
Councilmember Reddick?
Hi.
Councilmember Rhabak?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
And Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, cool. All right, we're moving on to, uh, from the consent calendar into ordinances and public hearings. I don't believe we have any, but just want to make sure as we go through.
I see none.
Okay, good. And we are then moving on to number three, which is resolutions and staff reports. We'll start off with item three A, which is a, excuse me, a resolution authorizing Black Lives Matter mural.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council and members of the community. I'll take this item. The, the item for consideration by the council is a resolution in support of Black Lives Matter and authorizing and directing the installation of the words Black Lives Matter on city property. This item came to the council from a member of the public, David Oblovi, at the July 21st council meeting during public forum. Mr. Oblovi spoke and talked about a project he was working on with his two sons regarding providing signs for Black Lives Matter. That then, as he explained, led him to the idea to approach the council about doing something on a larger scale and something for the, for the city to consider as a government and as, and as a council. Obviously, he was also watching the events that were happening nationally, as we all were, and other cities taking similar actions. That was on July 21st during public forum. There was no discussion at that point. Then at the council meeting on July 29th, under the item, at the end of the agenda, typically when the council considers other act items that they want staff to bring back, it was requested that we bring this item back for council consideration. So since then, I have worked with Mr. Oblovi to kind of work out the ideas of what he had in mind. And so before you today is a resolution in support of Black Lives Matter. Also, I want to mention your city attorney did quite a bit of work on this, and she will probably make a couple of comments as well. What I'd like to do is just actually read from the resolution. I think that characterized its best and for the public, what is before the council. I'm going to read three of the resolves that is being asked of the council. Now, now therefore be it resolved if the council decides to move forward with this, that Black Lives Matter and that the city council forever stands against racism, discrimination and police violence. The city council commits to act and encourage community action towards eliminating racial disparities in both the government and the community. Be it further resolved that the city recognizes that realizing racial, racial justice and equity in our community will take long-term commitment and that the city council pledges itself to this ongoing work. And then be it further resolved that the city council hereby authorizes the installation of a temporary mural in parking lot as an expression of the city council's support for Black Lives Matter movement and visions of a more just and equitable society. There are also recitals, I think, that are worth reading if the public wants to see them in that resolution. But I just thought it was very important to read those. That's what's being before the council today. Also in the staff report, I think it's the last paragraph gets into further detail of, of what we're talking about here. So I guess the first thing for the council is, is to have a discussion about the concept. See if there's any public comment. If there's agreement to move forward with this, this would be a city project, even though it was brought to us by a citizen. And so in that last paragraph, I provide some detail about location, size, color, et cetera. And so if the council wants to get into that discussion, I'm happy to provide some guidance on that. We obviously want some guidance from the council on that as well. I have spent some time, as I said, talking with Mr. Oblovi about what his concept was. And I've also spent some time looking in the city hall parking lot and talking with the city engineer about what we think would work best. So when we get to that point, we can certainly go into those kinds of details. That's what's before you today. I think Mr. Oblovi is in the audience today. So with that, I'll turn it back over to council.
All right, before, before we get to that, can we talk about, can we, can we open up Catherine to giving some background on her legality? Or you want that to come later?
You know, absolutely. Sorry about that. I did cue Catherine up and then I kind of left it hanging. On top of the legality, she also has a small addition to the resolution that she wants to read into the record. So it would be proper to turn it over to her at this point.
I think that'd be good to do before we open it up to the public in any way, shape or form.
Great. No, thank you. Thank you for that. So one, in terms of the legality issue, one sort of important thing to keep in mind here is that there is a doctrine of government speech that allows government to express its sentiments on government property and can do so and allow itself to make those points while at the same time saying no to other, other points. So, you know, typically government wants to prevent creating a public forum where public property is a, is sort of a free for all and you have to, you know, basically accept anyone's request for putting a certain type of message, given First Amendment considerations. But under this government speech doctrine, the government can make, you know, make statements on behalf of the government. And so this is what this resolution proposes to do. The city would not be alone if it does choose to adopt this resolution and authorize the painting of Black Lives Matter in the city hall parking lot. I did, you know, a fair amount of research, looked at similar types of resolutions from the city of San Mateo, the city of Palo Alto, city of Petaluma, El Cerrito. There are several others who have taken similar steps and adopted this model. In terms of one clarification I did want to make, the council has received some public comments already in written form. It's attached to the agenda. And one of the comments made was noting that one could interpret the support of the Black Lives Matter movement to actually be a support of a political organization called the Black Lives Matter Global Network Foundation. And that would not be the intention of this resolution to support a political organization. And I actually noted that when the city of San Mateo adopted a similar resolution, it specifically called out that it was, that its support for Black Lives Matter was not an endorsement of this political organization. So I would actually propose to amend that last resolved clause that Mr. Nisbet read to, to state instead that be it further resolved that the city council hereby authorizes the installation of a temporary mural in the city hall parking lot, which was actually not included in that, in that clause, as an expression of the city council's support of Black Lives Matter and visions of a more just and equitable society with an asterisk stating this resolution is not an endorsement of the political organization, Black Lives Matter Global Network Foundation. So with that, with that clarification, I would turn over any, any questions from council.
So, so just, just to clarify, because I, I want to make sure we understand what we're doing here. The, there, there were definitely some responses or reach out from the community saying that if you support Black Lives Matter, you're supporting this other, this other organization, more or less, which we called, what was it, what did you say? Black Lives Matter?
Global, sorry, Global Network Foundation.
Global Network Foundation. So you're, you're clearly delineating that those are not the same or that we, we are not considering them the same agencies, more or less.
Correct. And I would just say that, you know, most of the other resolutions that I reviewed did not feel necessary to make that distinction. But just given that we got a comment along those lines and just out of a bonus of caution, you know, I would, I would recommend that clarification.
Good. Okay. So understood that part. Now my next question, real quick before, and then I'll open it up to other people and then we can get into it. But like, in terms of getting sued, so we talked about other organizations that might want to put whatever they might want to put on city hall property. And they come to us as well and say, hey, we'd like to see this come up. And city council looks at it and goes, you know, we don't really support that message. How, what kind of danger are, could we be in if at all? And I'm just trying to understand it because there's a lot of energy on this topic. So I just want to make sure we're safe.
Yeah. So I'll respond to that with an example that you probably heard about, and it made national news, which was in Redwood City. There was a request to paint Black Lives Matter on a city street. The city acted quickly and allowed that to go forward, but then got a request. I think it, I think it may have been from Make America Great Again supporters asking to paint that on, on another city street. And the city decided, you know, I think we've maybe, maybe moved too quickly. Let's go back and actually think about this a little bit more, come up with a, a policy and a resolution that, you know, explains why we are going to, you know, move forward with the, I think they actually decided to do a statue or something of that nature in a park. But with that, you know, resolution expressing support for why they are, you know, using their, their government speech to support Black Lives Matter. That is the protection, if you will, for them, allowing them to say no to another type of, of requests. And then obviously we have second example, this is a follow-up. A few months ago, I guess it was in June, the council, as you recall, you adopted a resolution in support of Pride Month. And at, and as part of that actually allowed the flying of the pride flag at city hall for the month of June. And that was a similar type of sort of dual action, which clearly expressed that this is government speech. We're not going to accept every request to fly, you know, whatever flag at city hall. But we did so specifically because of the reasons in that resolution.
So, so just to be clear, if somebody brings something to us that we do not support and we decide not to allow it to be put up, is there a way that we can get sued? Or if we get sued, are we protected either way?
So this resolution is, is protective of the city being sued, you know, for, for saying no to another type of, of request.
Yeah, good.
So the, the question is, what is consistent with, you know, the city's values? And those values are set by, you know, policymakers, you know? So the policy, if it's not consistent with the values of the, of the people who are governing and who feel they represent the people out there in the community, you don't have to do, you don't have to be fair and balanced. That's not the goal, like, maybe with some news coverage, right? It's a reflection of community values.
No, definitely. My, my worry, of course, is that I, you know, this council, I think, is united. I will find out in a minute in, in where we stand currently. If it were a different council and we're united in maybe a different direction, it always brings fear to someone's heart like myself. That's kind of, you know, wanting to make sure that people are inclusive and peaceful and bringing community together as opposed to divisive and bringing them apart as like maybe other people in government and different levels do. You know, regimes change and it's sometimes not what we want to see. So I'm just, I'm slightly nervous about the precedent we're setting. And obviously the movement is a fantastic movement and I'm 100% behind that. And I've helped with the protests and all the different pieces from that perspective. But I just want to make sure we're setting ourselves up as a city to be doing the right thing, not just now, but consistently moving forward.
You know, my feeling about that, Adam, is that it's like saying that we would like to brand ourselves as a city. We've talked about that in the past. And how do we see ourselves as a city? And one of the important issues for me in terms of, of how I see our city is that we are an inclusive city.
Yeah.
And that that's, that's been critical to this council and to the last council for the last at least eight years that I've been on council, that inclusivity is paramount in all of our minds as, as, as an idea that we want to accomplish. And, and we are And, and we are constantly working on it. We're working on it with our affordable housing. We're working on it with our Latino council. We're working on it with trying to understand our policing better. It's all about inclusivity. And I am definitely in favor of the BLM logo because I believe that Black Lives Matter and I, I'd be proud to have it displayed.
No, very good, very good. And of course, very good. All right. So that is, from that perspective, does anybody else have questions with Catherine? Before we move on to, I guess, opening it up to the public a little bit and then back to council? If that's okay, in terms of an order of events? Good. All right. Any other questions before I open it up to the public? Cool. Do we have any public members that want to speak on this?
Yes, we do. And first, we would like to allow David Ablov to speak.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First, it's, my two sons are going to speak to you tonight.
Hi, my name is Juno.
And my name is Declan Ablov.
My brother and I would like to thank the city council, the city and city staff for their work in helping to make our idea a reality.
We understand that this is a difficult topic for many people and want to especially thank the members of the city council for standing with us and declaring that racism and inequity in our world are not okay and that Black Lives Matter.
But we do have two concerns. The first is that our original design for the sign seemed to be much more significant than what you are now proposing. We don't understand why our original design cannot be installed as previously discussed. We are asking that you direct staff to do it the way we all imagined it last month.
We also have an issue with the declaration that the mural is temporary. You either stand with the minorities or you don't, tagging along for the ride when convenient, only to get off when, only to get off when not is a sign of insincerity. Thus, we believe that you should remove the word temporary from the resolution.
We'd like to thank you again for taking your busy time to work on this with us. It is our hope that our community will be a more welcoming and accepting place as a result of our efforts. And we are grateful for everything you have done.
Thank you.
Cool. Good job, guys. So first, my kids want to thank you for two hours of extra time past their bedtime tonight. They're, they actually wanted to go to sleep about 10 minutes ago, which tells you all you need to know about that one. Moving on, I actually never write down what I'm going to say, but I actually did tonight because I thought it was that important. Martin Luther King may have said that the arc of the moral universe is long and that it bends towards justice. But what he left out is that the bending part happens because people had occurred and, and fight for their ideals. I'm proud to say that I know all of you pretty well and that you're willing and I expect that you will take on this fight for as long as you are in office. Slavery did not end because people stood around and waited for it to end. Desegregation didn't happen because people stood around arguing about names and ideas and waiting for it to happen. And the Black Lives Matter movement did not happen because people stood around waiting for someone else to do something. Physically declaring Black Lives Matter loudly, proudly, and with as much scale as you can manage may carry a political risk for the five of you. But the only way we bend that arc just a little bit is through people like my kids and like you, using your power and wisdom to bend it yourselves. I am sure you will hear, actually turns out you already have heard, from people tonight who in ignorance and fear will try to equate the idea of BLM to an organization, a person, or an ancient political philosophy. Nonetheless, you can stand strong. The people of Half Moon Bay and the Ark of Morality are with you on this one. So the boys and I did speak earlier this afternoon and I outlined where we were at on the design and they were pretty adamant. They would like it to be the way they intended it to be, which is from Maine to Johnson with ginormous letters and no possibility of mistaken intent or commitment. As their dad, I stand with them in this request and I would ask you as a council to do what you can to facilitate that reality or possibility. That said, I also accept that a different course may be chosen by you and if it is, we will completely respect that course. Finally, I'd like to roll out a huge thank you to staff, especially Bob, who spent way more time than he probably should have on this and the council who were willing to discuss it at length without whom, or without whom any of this could have happened. That's all we've got. Thank you very much and hopefully you'll get home before two in the morning.
All right. Thanks, David. And David, I'm so sorry. I forgot the name of this, but David Children, Ablov Children. Great, great job staying up, great speeches, and thank you for helping to lead this movement.
Declan and Juno.
Thank you. Uh, okay. I think we have Space Odyssey.
Yes, we do.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are. You can speak. Go ahead. Oh, she's muted herself again. Yeah, there you are. You're live.
Okay. Good evening, or I should say good night. It's so late, but let me give you my comments. May I start by saying that I value every single black life in America. I will also state that all lives matter. All lives matter. I am appalled by the draft resolution presented tonight. I do not accept the premise that there is a systemic killing of black men by police. I do not accept the premise that the police violate the human rights of black people and that there is a need for a systemic change. The great majority of the sheriffs and police are good people. They should not be vilified. Black Lives Matter is a highly organized, highly funded Marxist organization. They do not have a vision for a more just and equitable society. BLM and other Marxist groups seek a change in our community so that we would no longer recognize our beautiful America. BLM is a volatile, flaming, raging issue across this country and in our streets now. BLM is a partisan organization that supports the Democrat Party and other socialist Marxist progressive organizations. If you click on the donate button on the BLM website, you will, your funds will be diverted to Act Blue. Act Blue supports Democrat and socialist candidates and organizations. The BLM website does not divert their funds to WinRed, which is a Republican fund raising site. They divert their funds to the Democrats. The city of Half Moon Bay is supposed to be a nonpartisan governmental entity. I believe your actions are partisan and violate, and violate nonpartisanship rules. I ask that you reject this draft resolution as presented tonight. And finally, along the lines of the comment just made a few seconds ago, certainly it is a community value of Half Moon Bay that they value blue lives. And so blue lives do matter. Thank you for your attention.
Ma'am, if, if you could just state your name or possibly email it to me at bjett@hmbcity.com. I need it for the public record.
I will give that to you. Just so you do know, Deborah Riddick has my name in an email. And I think Deborah has it for right now.
Okay.
But I will email it to you, Bridget.
Thank you. I appreciate, I would appreciate it just for our, our minutes. Thank you.
And, and Space Odyssey, I appreciate you speaking up. I mean, it's, it's a tough issue on, on both sides. We've heard it from both sides. It is not a one-sided issue by any str, you know, and, and that it's definitely a, an issue that strikes people and gets people emotional in a lot of different ways. So I just want to thank you for speaking up as well because it's, it's not easy to speak up on, on all sides of this issue publicly.
Okay. So we have one more speaker, it looks like. Let me just come from Stacy McCarthy and I'm allowing her to speak.
Thank you. On record, as we hemnately rejecting the last speaker's comments, Black Lives Matter, all lives can't matter until Black Lives Matter. We know that. We know that's a fact. Brown Lives Matter as well in our community. Those two groups of people of color need recognition and it's time. It is absolutely time. This is not a, that is not a partisanship issue in any way, shape or form. Our organization, Coside Families Taking Action, has been formed on this. Incidences of BLM signs being torn down around our community, that action is divisive. That is squarely in the face of what I've heard all the council members speak of tonight and in previous sessions. It is not complicated. There are not multiple things here. These are human beings and their lives matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Good comments. And thanks for what you do.
Okay. Looks like we have another. Lauren Wilson.
Hi, Councilman and Mayor. I wanted to echo Stacy and David and voice my support for continuing to pass this resolution and painting the Black Lives Matter.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Lauren. Thanks, thanks for, for staying up and being there and speaking up. Appreciate it. Okay, very good. Those are the public comments. Let's bring it back to council to discuss.
Yeah, I'm wondering, do we have a sketch of what we're proposing?
That's great. A great question.
Anybody know what it's going to look like?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Ablov did provide a site plan of the city hall parking lot with the words Black Lives Matters superimposed over the parking lot. We did not actually scale the, the, the aerial that he submitted. But as he indicated in his comments, the letters were at a size that they extended the, pretty much the full length of the parking lot from Main Street to Johnson Street in the travel lane between the parking stalls that are angled stalls on either side of the parking lot. We, we purposely decided not to submit drawings tonight. We, we have also toyed around with our own drawings and we decided that by providing drawings, that that could get conversations going in too many directions on size and location. And so after I had discussions with Mr. Ablov, after he submitted his first site plan, I made the decision that not presenting a site plan at this point would be the best approach. But obviously that's an important topic for the council to consider, the location and the size. And like I said, it, when the conversation gets to that specifically, I'll make some comments about what I observed and, and some comments that I received from the city engineer in terms of functionality, when, when that's appropriate.
Well, I think, I think that's appropriate now, no?
Sure.
I, I think, let's just, let's just get into all of that stuff because at, at this point, let's, I think we can maybe answer some questions because I think that's a great question Deborah just asked. But it's, it's good to get a sense of what we're talking about. I mean, when we hear there's a staff recommendation saying one thing, we hear David and his son saying they want something else. I, I don't want to make decisions without having a really good understanding of what, you know, we need to fully understand what we're talking about here.
Sure. So I'll, I'll give you my thought process and also included in there will be some comments that I received from Maz, more on functionality. But my initial reaction in terms of not so much functionality and certainly not to the topic that is before, that was just discussed by the speakers and yourself, but more just on the presentation and what would feel like a scale that works in Half Moon Bay. So when I observed the parking lot, I know it well. I come into the building all the time, how people use the parking lot, how tourists walk down Main Street, stop at the parking lot, take a look at the jail, which is on the other side of Johnson Street. People cut through the parking lot, pedestrians do, obviously cars use it. And what would catch someone's attention and be readable from Main Street? So that was the lens I, when I received the site plan, that I looked at it. And to me, the letters on the site plan that was provided were so large, I just did not get the sense that you would, a person standing on Main Street or standing on the parking lot would even be able to read them because they were, be so large.
You couldn't even see down it that far like it did.
Yeah, obviously as you walked, you could read it. So if you were walking over these, these letters, B L A C K, I mean, you would, you could read it, no doubt. So I don't want to.
Are you suggesting you'd need to be like in a helicopter to be able to read it?
If you wanted to see it as a phrase, and, and the example that, that I remember seeing, the first one I saw was Washington DC. That was the first one I personally saw. That was painted on the street. Those letters had to be 15 to 20 feet in height, I would say. Probably 15 feet. And they were clearly at a size that you could only see the phrase in totality from, from a, from an aerial shot. What effect they have driving over them, I, I don't know. I haven't been in Washington DC. I, I have a feeling driving over those, you're not going to get the sense. I mean, you know it's there and you're, you're going to realize it says Black Lives Matter, maybe. But if there's traffic, you're driving over them. So for me, I, I was just, my thought was, hey, for Half Moon Bay, a walkable scale, a human scale, one where you can see all three words and read them without having to walk them. It just, that felt better to me. So that, that's a point of view that others might disagree with, but that was the point of view that I had and I certainly shared that point of view with Mr. Ablov. On a functional level, and Maz can certainly speak up, there is a concrete ribbon gutter that goes down that travel lane. It's about two, two and a half feet wide. It's for drainage. And it goes down the middle extending from Maine to Johnson. And Maz's feeling, and I agreed with them, is that it would be better if the letters were on the blacktop and not on the concrete. Maz can speak to that on the difference on the, how that would be to, be to maintain and the different characteristics those two materials have when car tires start to mark them, et cetera. So once I put those two thoughts in my head, human scale, avoid the concrete ribbon gutter, I looked out there and, and you could either go on, if you, if you want to write it lengthwise, my thought was it would be lengthwise adjacent to city hall. And so someone walking down Main Street, it would draw, it would certainly draw them in. They would see all the words. They would see that that's city hall. They would see the jail. And so for me, if you look at the dimensions that are available out there in the travel lane on either side, either side of the ribbon gutter, I think you maybe have three feet on one side, four or five feet on the other side. I, I was thinking, yeah, block lettering, all capitals, but maybe in around the two, two feet range. And if you spread out two feet with 16 letters, you're going to get about 25 feet long, I think. Which, which would, which would be, you know, carry you from Main Street down towards the back door of city hall, say, for example. So that's, that's what I came up with. Maz, do you have anything to add? The other thought, the other comment that was made by David was also the temporary nature. We did make some comments in the staff report. One, obviously we have to maintain, maintain the parking lot from time to time. That, that certainly doesn't mean that it can't be repainted. But also the thought was, you know, this gives an opportunity to see if this is the permanence that, that the community and the council wants. As was mentioned in Redwood City, they eventually decided to do something else. There have been talks about doing other murals, doing other things. We, we want to at some point put forth a mural policy, a public art policy, which we currently don't have. So that, the thought was, hey, you know, So that, the thought was, hey, you know, paint it on there and see how it goes and then a decision could be made later. And, 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 you know, permanence is a long time. I mean, we, we just don't know what we don't know. And that doesn't mean, when I say that, that that there will be a resolution to racial issues in this country and it needs to be there until there are. It's just, the council doesn't usually do things where they actually use the phrase, it's gonna be temporary or permanent. It's usually just left and then a decision can be made as, as times change or different ideas come forward. So that was the thought on that. Sorry for being long-winded. And obviously, if there's any functional technical questions about the paint, how it will last, how much maintenance will have to go into it, Maz can answer those questions.
Maz, could you speak to those questions?
Absolutely. So one of the concerns that I have was, you know, looking at it just from the paint perspective and just the application of it. The different surfaces will have different wear. So one concern I had was, if we do it on the concrete ribbon as well as the asphalt, you may have it wear at different rates and, you know, that would, it would, it would, it would change the message a little bit there. We're also, the other, all the other concern is off of the concrete, it does wear off a little bit faster, it can. And so with, with it being a water, a potential water, you know, conveyance system for stormwater, there was a potential concern with putting paint in, in a gutter pan. We generally wouldn't want to do that. So those are some of the technical considerations that we had. One of the other things that just, when I was looking at the layout was that it just appeared that the gray, the contrast between the gray or the valley gutter and the asphalt surface kind of looked like it was a line strike through the message. And so that was from, from an aesthetic perspective. It just, to my eyes, it just seemed like it didn't, we really should try to keep it on one side of the gutter.
Good answers. What's the cost associated with all this?
I estimated it at the two-foot level, if we do it at two-foot height, that's, that's, and that, and that, the reason why we, why we we looked at two-foot height is that's the more standard street marking size that you would see, like a stop legend or, you know, crosswalk ahead. It's about the same size you would see for that. And we estimated it to be about $2,000 with staff and materials for what this is. Now, depending on what the, the outcome of this discussion is, we'll have to take a closer look at the budget. But just based off of what we were, what we looked at, I think we can, we can do it for about $2,000.
One of my thoughts was in looking at, when you look at something in the distance, the things that are further away seem smaller. The things that are closer to you seem larger. Additionally, the letters, spacing of the letters is gonna change. So you'll see B L A better than you see C K or M A T T, et cetera. So making them, making all of the letters a little bit wider than you would normally might make sense from an aesthetic point of view. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It would be more readable.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and in that way, maybe you could extend it a little closer to Johnson Street. Which I think aesthetically would look better than having it just go halfway into the parking lot. Just from an artistic point of view.
Council members, you want to weigh in?
Very briefly, I agree with Debbie Ruddock and Deborah Penrose that this would be an expression of what the council's values are and I'm fully in support of it. The size of the letters and the spacing is not that important to me. It's the message that we want to get out there, so I'm all in favor of that.
Good, that's good. We heard from you, we heard from Deborah. Debbie, Robert?
Yeah, I, you know, I think it's important to do. You know, Black Lives Matter is, is giving voice to people who have not had a voice in this country, not a meaningful voice compared to, you know, Caucasians. It's historical, it has transformed over time to still, you know, create a yoke on African-American people. They're among the most incarcerated, poor, poor health outcomes, and it's, it is systemic, it's institutionalized. And it's gotta end. And the only way to do it is to give voice to the voiceless, I believe. And, you know, there are many manifestations and ways to do this. I think is an expression of our community values. I'd like the idea of this project. I love that two young people brought this idea forward and that, that they should feel great that it's gotten this far, you know, and we're treating this very seriously. That's a big deal, you know? You brought forward an idea, triggered initiative, it's wonderful stuff. So I, I, you know, I disagree with those who think that, you know, that we can't take a political point of view. And, you know, for me, not all facts are equal. Not all opinions are worthy and I don't feel compelled to offer the same expression to MAGA. It's not my values. I happen to be sitting here. We happen to be sitting here. So I'm in favor of this project and, you know, I'm gonna, you know, trust staff to, on the technical aspects. I think it's important to get the message out and to, and to honor this moment. Right now is the moment. And given the fact that we're in a federal election that's probably the most important in our lives in American history, this is the moment to give voice to this, so. I'm totally in favor of it.
Excellent. Robert?
Well, I don't know if I necessarily agree with all perspectives, but I like to hear all perspectives. And, you know, in this case, and I can only speak for myself. You know, when I see the words "Black Lives Matter" from the very beginning, what I read and heard was "Black Lives Matter too, Black Lives Matter also." And I realized that some folks read those same three words and sometimes some folks see that they put the word only in front, you know, only "Black Lives Matter." And, you know, we can wonder, how can you have such different perspectives? You know, from your neighbors, from people in this country and you know, we all bring a lot of different experiences to what we see in front of us and I guess we're entitled to those experiences. But when I see those words, I feel, you know, it's not asking for the highest bar in the world to say, hey, you know, our lives matter too, especially in the history of this country. And I think it's an ask, you know, for equity and justice through peaceful and positive change. I mean, we had a demonstration in this town where hundreds and hundreds of people showed up from all different backgrounds. We have mothers from all different backgrounds linking arms and protecting protesters. I never even, you know, was associated with some international organization that had Marxist connections. You know, that's not how I saw, I don't think that's how most people feel about those three words. And I remember, you know, Adam, you were, you spoke at that demonstration and you talked about positive change. And you're happy to see so many people coming out in support of positive change. So that's what I think, when we support the idea of putting these words up, that we are reflecting a large portion of this community and it important and sometimes reflecting values that you feel right. Not everybody might agree with them or how they're expressed, but I think these are important American values and important community values of what we want to stand for in Half Moon Bay. So I really have no problem of how that's represented. I respect other people's perspectives. But I think this community has spoken with their feet and their voices and, and, you know, again, attempting to respect all perspectives. I think the principles of fairness, equity and justice are some, are principles that we can all agree with. So that's where I stand.
I like it. So, yeah, Robert, first of all, I want to say, I, you hit a couple of things that I really respect in your response in particular, which is, you know, you don't necessarily need to agree with what everybody says, but listening to what everybody says, allowing people to express themselves because there are definitely people on both sides of this issue. And, you know, we don't have to agree, but we have to allow people to speak up and listen to people. That's part of our jobs as council members and mayors and all the different pieces. So I just, I just want to offer that there is a, you know, we are willing to listen to all sides even though we might not necessarily agree with all sides. And I think that's a beautiful, that's a beautiful piece right there and what we're supposed to do in our jobs as well. A, B, you know, we talked about this in great detail, Robert, and I really appreciated, you kind of really dug into me deeply and were kind of like, what was it that you were really, you know, you, you were there at the protest, you spoke. You, you, you were at another protest, you spoke again, you know, what, why were you there? Like, what was it? And you really made me kind of like, what, you know, why was I there? Like, what's the real deep thing? And it really was, you know, this moment of change that's on the horizon. It's really, it's really what it's all about because to me, you know, being able to go through the world the way that I get to go through the world, I feel like, you know, everybody should get to go through the world that way. And so kind of putting that out there, that nobody should be treated differently based on, let's just say, the color of their skin. And people have been, and it's, it's just not right. And so I'm, I'm very much willing to take a stand on this. I kind of agree with Councilwoman Ruddock, like, I don't know if I can do this, but the lettering, the size, the angle, the colors, the this, that. I, I'm, I'm wondering if I can literally defer that to staff because I really just don't even want to be that involved in that portion of the conversation, I guess, unless we have to. But, you know, I love the statement that we're making. I don't want to make it so ostentatious where people are, you know, lightning rodded, fired up towards it. But on the other hand, we need to make our point. I'm happy to make our point, but I don't want to like shove it in people's faces per se. So, you know, I want to find that right balance, but I do feel like change is needed. We want to stand for that and I'm all in. And I don't know if that is enough direction and I'm hoping it is. And that's kind of my perspective on it. So I'll go back to Bob and then maybe we can go back and, and just understand, like, is, is that something that can be worked out between you and the Ablohvi family more or less to make it work as best as possible for Half Moon Bay? Or do we, do you need more direction from us on that? We're putting it on you a little bit, I guess.
I would appreciate a little more guidance. I am not expecting each council member to say a dimension. I don't, I understand that. But if there's any guidance at all about the approximate location and size, that would be appreciated. And if at the end you want staff to work that out, we will, we will do that and we will come to an agreement with Mr. Ablohvi. That is great for everyone. I'm confident of that. But any additional guidance, other council members want to give opinions similar to the ones I put forth would be appreciated if, if, if people have them.
I would say, stay out of the, stay out of the gutter.
Stay out of the gutter, exactly. And it makes total sense. Maybe three feet instead of two feet.
So stay out of the gutter. We can take that as guidance and, and go from there. Is there anything else that jumps out to anyone? I think we can, I think we can work with that. David and I have been working very collaboratively so far, as he said, and I think we can, we can work from here.
I like the idea of keeping it, you know, the walkable scale. That makes sense to me. You know, where you can see it, it's in front of you, you see the whole message right there. You don't have to walk along to build your message. It hits you right there.
I support that as well. My, my other question here, and we can go into more direction, but let me just, because I just started to get into this. So now, I hate to bring this up because, you know, we, none of us want this to happen in any way, shape or form. But if, if something were to happen where it got defaced or graffitied on or this and that, what, what is our plan? I mean, what, what do we do in those types of situations just in case? Hopefully, you know, that would be the worst case scenario, but what are we, what are we gonna do just in case something like that were to happen?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, it would be our intention, if that happened, to repaint it as quickly as possible. If you leave that there for any period of time, it gives the person who defaces it the power that they got what they wanted for some amount of time. So we would do it very quickly.
Good.
And we would also report it to our sheriff's department. And if it continued, we would do our best to find the person who did it.
Excellent, excellent.
I would just assume that that's going to happen. I'm just imagining.
And it might. And we can repaint once, twice, three times and I'd be happy to be out there helping to repaint.
Good. No, I like that response. And if we have cameras over a particular area, maybe that would be good to have as well just to make sure that everything's safe and good.
Great idea.
Yeah. All right, anything else that's, oh, please?
I think it's important that we incorporate in the motion the changes recommended by our city attorney.
Very good. Very good.
I know you closed public comment and I just wanted you to be aware that there are two people raising their hands and it's up to you to reopen.
Oh, yeah, let's go for it. Yeah, I'd like to hear some public at this point.
Okay, so public comment period is open again and I have Melinda and Phil Marshall first.
Good evening, council. It's actually Phil Marshall here. So I had just a couple of quick comments. Well, the first is, I think Stacy could say it best, all lives can't matter until, until Black Lives Matter. And so I think in this particular moment, you want to go big rather than small. And so I would agree with Councilmember Penrose and others who have urged you to err in the direction of a big statement rather than a small statement. This is only a temporary mural, so now's your chance. The other thing I wanted to suggest was, given the resolution, the other words in your resolution, which have a more lasting feel to them, that maybe it's worth considering a permanent mural somewhere else in town that somehow captures the essence of Black Lives Matter, but perhaps puts it in context with the wider Half Moon Bay community and, you know, other recent history, perhaps even longer history of the people in this town. And just wanted to put that out there as a, perhaps a longer lasting statement about the town values. Thanks. And just wanted to, to put that out there as a, uh, perhaps a, a longer lasting um, statement about town values. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Good.
Okay, the next person we have um, up is Stacy McCarthy.
Thank you again for a moment to speak and uh, thank you again. Uh, thank you also to Phil and his voice. The questions that have come up for um, our family are around the placement in the parking lot versus the sidewalk in front. I imagine there's been conversation around that. The more permanent nature of uh, of a mural. Is, is something that we're wondering about in addition to what Phil's referring to, which is the long, longer history that we have here as a community. Um, in our other uh, communities of color. And potentially over a longer period of time, considering something that's also representative of our broader. Community. I'd like to see us consider that. In line with the values that I think that you each hold and have articulated so nicely tonight and in the wording in your resolution. I'm grateful to be a member of this community where you're standing up for Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Um, are we ready to move forward with this? Do we need to, any other comments, anybody? Any more clarification needed from you, Bob?
I have, I just have one more public comment.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay. Um, and then we can, then you can close public.
All right, because I'm, I'm, I'm going to be ready because we still, yeah, let's go.
Yeah, so RJ. You can speak.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you can speak.
I, I appreciate, as an African American, I appreciate your. Taking this conversation to this level. And the only thing that I ask is that. I don't know. What the size will look like. I haven't really spent the time in that space. And I, and I appreciate Bob that you have an opinion around how it will feel for you. And I just want to make sure that when you have this conversation with these young people that are doing this, that you don't limit it to. A parameter, because we have been limited to parameters for hundreds of years. And so it just, you know, I don't think that your intent is to limit us. And I think it being large has a statement in itself as well. So to be, for my request, Bob, is that you have an open mind to. How that might affect as well as having it small or something where you feel that people can read. So. Just to have, to have that open mind in the conversation that they both can be very effective. So, but I appreciate the comments. I appreciate the conversation. And on all the comments that have come in, because I think that it unveils. The, you know, some of the, the minds throughout America of what is considered systemic and what isn't and. You know, we put labels on things and so I want to hear all of these comments because it continues to foster. You know, where we are and we're trying to make a move. We're trying to, to, to stand up and shift a gear here. So. Um, so thank you all for, for this and, you know, I look forward to walking down that street. I look forward to, to seeing this. I look forward to being as big as possible. I look forward to us owning a space as big as possible in this world. And to be seen and to have that voice. So, thank you.
Very good. And I just want to, I appreciate the comments and I just want to defend our city manager, who I think is a tremendously open minded individual. And I'm sure it wasn't meant that way, but uh, but Bob, Bob, Bob actually, I think has uh, is great at seeing multiple perspectives. And lots of different inputs and synthesizing all that. So I just want to back him up because I think he's doing a, a great job.
I second that.
Yeah.
Hello, last, I have um, David Ablohvi that would like to speak again. Are you?
Let's do it.
Okay, guys, sorry. I figure since everyone's getting multiple turns, I should get multiple turns. So first one I want to say is. Uh, Bob and I are working well together with input from the kids and I'm sure we're going to find a solution. The reason I brought up the full size was because that was what they wanted and this is partly their project and they had every right to bring it up and speak to it. Um, so that's the one thing I want to say. Uh, the second thing I want to say, and this is directly to you, Adam. You're either for racism or you're against racism. There aren't both sides. There are not two sides to this argument. You either fight it or you accept it. Okay, that's all there is. There's no one else to listen to. You guys stand alone here. You make your decision, you make your vote and you move on. And now I will quit for the night, I promise.
Good. I'm not sure why you're directing that at me, but uh, I appreciate the uh, the, the affirmation. Thanks, thanks, David. Um.
No one else.
All right, good. Uh, all right, what should we do at this point? Are we ready to move onward?
I move uh, per staff with the recommendations made by Catherine Enberg, our city attorney.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Riddick.
Aye.
Commissioner Rarback.
Uh, wholeheartedly, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm even, I'm, it's late at night. I'm even calling you guys commissioners, I think, and not councilmembers. I'm really sorry. Councilmember Penrose.
Yes.
Uh, Vice Mayor Brownstone.
Yes.
And Mayor Eisen.
Yeah, absolutely. And contrary to whatever David's trying to paint me out to be, uh, 100% yes.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, very good. Uh, let's move on to item three B, emergency housing assistance grants.
Thank you, council, and I believe Victor, you're going to share the presentation. Great. All right. Great. Uh, we'll try to keep this presentation short, uh, to allow plenty of time for discussion among council members and uh, a chance to give a, a direction to staff. Um, this uh, item is being brought to you at your request. It's something that we've been talking about for a while and that the timing seems right. Uh, based on some of the recent events in the county here. Joining me today is Victor Gaitan, our uh, community services analyst and uh. Uh, really our lifeline to our local nonprofits and connecting to the community. So, thank you, Victor. Uh, next slide, please. So what we're, what we're talking about here is really one of the major impacts uh, on individuals and families that we've seen. Uh, due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, as, as we know, we've talked about uh, in a lot of different ways tonight, COVID-19 has really impacted a lot of people in a lot of different ways. Uh, but many people have seen their income, their employment, uh, their financial security, their savings impacted negatively. Uh, because of all the impacts of COVID, including the shelter in place orders, uh, natural uh, changes to the economy because of fears around COVID. And um, all of this is on the heels of the most expensive uh, real estate market we've ever seen. And uh, many families, especially those in uh, lower income brackets and service industries, struggling to make it as is. And to have the impacts of COVID uh, compounded on top of all of that has really put many people in a, in a tough spot, especially around their housing. And so many efforts have been made over the last several months to support these individuals and families and protect them. And I think the most notable of all is in March, the county adopted a countywide emergency moratorium on residential rental evictions. And what this did is it protected renters who were unable to pay rent uh, during uh, this difficult time. Due to uh, a loss of income or jobs or financial wellbeing uh, because of COVID. And uh, of course, there were parameters around what that meant. And uh, it, it was really truly meant to protect individuals and families that are impacted and not as a way for others to. Take advantage of a situation. And so I think that's, it's been effective and it's protected families and individuals. Uh, the moratorium has been renewed twice, uh, most recently at the Board of Supervisors' most recent meeting. Um, they set the expiration for August 31st of this year. And that's uh, somewhat in line with uh, state authority that they had received. One of the things though they did to ensure that um, we move forward in, in the right way is. They added a moratorium on uh, the payment of back rent. For 12 months, not that people couldn't pay their back rent for 12 months, but evictions could not be uh. People couldn't be evicted for past due rent that was accumulated during the past several months. And that individuals would have 12 months to pay back those uh, those debts that they'd incurred for the rent that they were unable to pay during. Uh, these uh, COVID uh, periods. Um, the main reason that the county cited for not extending this uh, moratorium any further was that mounting debt. You, you, there are several uh, people in our community, many people in our community that. Have been accumulating this debt over five months and at some point rent would have to begun to be paid. And not only are you having to become current on your rent, but now you've got this major looming debt that. There's no way to repay because if you were living month to month, uh, paycheck to paycheck before COVID. Uh, there's no indication that that's going to change going forward. And the county didn't want to put people in a position where they'd never be able to repay their debts. And also landlords who are having to uh, find ways to support their properties while not receiving rent over this period of time. It, it just, it, I think from the county's perspective, we've reached a tipping point and it was time to make a change. Uh, of course, next slide, Victor. Of course, um, the county didn't do this without uh, thinking about how to resolve further issues going forward. And so they've set aside $12 million over the last several months to support renters, landlords. And, and making sure that, that one landlords could begin to be paid, uh, the rent that's owed to them, starting in September. And also uh, hopefully support them i- in renters and paying back those previous debts. Uh, the city works closely with many nonprofits around this issue. Uh, in this case, we're working really closely with Coastside Hope based out of El Granada. They are what's called the core agency. For uh, most of the coast side from Montero down to the city limits of Half Moon Bay. And they uh, are a nonprofit that the county utilizes to provide many of. The social services that are needed on the coast and a real connection to the community. Saint Vincent de Paul is not based on the coast, but has local staff and sets up local office hours and opportunities for. Uh, coast side residents to receive support and services from their helpful nonprofit and Coastside Hope and Saint Vincent de Paul work really, really closely. To um, meet the needs of a, a broad demographic here on the coast and different needs from different individuals here on the coast. Both of those agencies have indicated that the need for um, housing support has um, doubled during uh, this period and even, that's even with. The uh, eviction moratorium in place. And their expectation is that as the moratorium, moratorium comes to an end at the end of this month. That um, many more individuals are going to need help with rent beginning September 1st. And that uh, the demand is going to be extremely high. That's not to say that the resources are not in place. Uh, as, as, as mentioned, the county has dedicated $12 million to support. Um, countywide individuals and families with rental support. And uh, there are many other private and um, different sources of funding to help support renters. Um, that have always been in place and new ones additionally, and a lot of private donations um, that are in place now because of COVID. Uh, what, what we do know from working with these agencies is that each pot of money comes with different restrictions, different program guidelines. And really creates kind of a tool belt for these agencies to use to serve different uh, clients at different times and in different ways. And um, based on our discussions with them, uh, additional funding would be helpful to them to give them uh, additional opportunities to support. Their clients and our residents here on the coast. And so Victor and I have been working really closely with Coastside Hope and Saint Vincent de Paul. On uh, prospective program that could uh, further support our coast side residents. Uh, and with that, I'll turn the time over to Victor to share uh, our proposed program and uh, kind of how that would be implemented. And then we're interested in your thoughts and feedback, Victor.
Thanks, Matthew. Um, as Matthew mentioned, in light of the moratorium ending on, on August 31st. He and I both met with um, both representatives from uh, from Coastside Hope and Saint Vincent de Paul early last week. Uh, to discuss um, what, what their needs are, what they're seeing, uh, what the increased numbers look like. And in those discussions, um, we came to the numbers that were included in the recommendation. Of um, funding emergency house, emergency housing assistance grants uh, to each organization. For a hundred thousand dollars a piece, uh, for a total of $200,000. These funds uh, would be used to pay the, the current month's rent, so the next month's being September. Because as Matthew mentioned, any back rent from the moratorium period would not be due immediately. Uh, but in order to keep people housed and, and uh, not be delinquent on, on their rent, you must be able to pay the current month's rent for the next couple of months. Similar to the uh, community services financial assistance grants program. To the agreement that we had with Saint Vincent de Paul in fiscal year 2019, 2020. Funds would be limited to individuals who either live in Half Moon Bay or live in unincorporated uh, areas of the coast side and work in Half Moon Bay. Um, and as Matthew mentioned, both of these organizations work very closely. If Coastside Hope gets someone, um, they've gone through the whole process, the intake process and uh, eventually determined that. Uh, they cannot assist them uh, due to restrictions on the funding that uh, Coastside Hope gets. They then refer them to Saint Vincent de Paul. Miss, Saint Vincent de Paul is usually able to assist them. Uh, due to uh, their less restrictive funding sources. Um, so yeah, they already work very closely together, uh, which is, which is great. And um. For these funds, uh, we are requiring um, just quarterly check-ins, but also um. More monthly check-ins initially, uh, just to check in with organizations. See how the funding is being used. And eventually after uh, the first three months. Checking with them again, uh, and kind of reassess needs. Something that we discussed with them is after this funding might be used up. Uh, there might be a need for more funding potentially. Uh, so if we, uh, we were to meet with them again, we reassess those needs and, and potentially bring another proposal for additional funding. And something we discussed with them as well was any additional funding after the first three months, after the first 100K each. Might be used or might be better used to uh, start paying some of that back rent from the moratorium periods. People. Don't necessarily continue to accumulate debt. And something I'll mention as well, um. I believe it was last year, the council came up with guidelines for the use of the affordable housing funds. Uh, we have reviewed the guidelines um, and found that uh, this would be an appropriate use of the funds. A couple of things I'll mention here, funds are leveraged and combined with other funding sources. Uh, these funds will support high-risk populations. In conjunction with that, also um, help prevent homelessness in this community. Uh, and as, as has been mentioned quite a bit, Coastside Hope and Saint Vincent de Paul, uh, both have demonstrated um, past performance in serving the entire population. And uh, past performance in administering um, housing assistance um, to, to several individuals in the area. Um, and with that, um. We would like uh, to recommend the council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into grant agreements of up to $100,000 each. With Coastside Hope and Saint Vincent de Paul to provide emergency housing assistance. And authorizing the use of up to $200,000 from the Affordable Housing Fund in fiscal year 2020, 21. And uh, we'll take any questions you might have.
I have a question, yeah, um, for both you and Matthew, if you know. Because I've seen some of the other grant programs and typically. The idea was to give, let's say, up to $1,000. Per request, which in this case would. Allow for 200 families. Um, to get up to $1,000. And the, oh, I think the overarching philosophy was, you know, a lot of. Landlords will, you know. Be okay with, you know, partial rent. Uh, not necessarily evict folks and allow people to then still have money left for food, et cetera. So is, is that your sense generally that would, that, that we'd be able to help out around two? So is that your sense generally that 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 we'd be able to help out around 200 families? And generally the grants would be 1,000 or you're not sure? I wasn't sure either.
Victor, I'm happy to jump in on this. I I don't think we were, our recommendation wasn't to put that type of restriction on it. Obviously, we want this money to go as far as possible and serve as many people as possible. But I think this is one of those areas where we just want to work really closely with the nonprofits. And as they, you know, get through the first month of serving the community, we can kind of see what the needs have been and how important our funding is versus other funding sources and where those needs might be. And and we can always come come back and set additional restrictions. But I don't think initially we want to cap anything other than helping with a single month of rent initially. And so for some families, that might be only $1,000. Maybe it's $1,000 leveraged with $1,000 of other funding. But for some families, it might it might make sense just to provide, you know, 2,000 or $2,500 initially and then and see what happens in the future months. So I I know that this is not typical. Normally, we really want to bake in some very strict rules about this. But I think the power that we have right now versus some of the other funding sources is to be much more flexible. And, you know, the track record of both these nonprofits is that they're extremely prudent with funding. They vet these folks really, really carefully. And they make sure that they're not providing funds in an inappropriate way. And I think regular check-ins can ensure that, but I think that's our initial approach to this. And obviously pending your your input as well.
No, I trust both these organizations as well. I just, like you said, you know, you'd like to see it go as far as possible for as many people. And frankly, I, well, depending on how others feel, I'd be quite happy with making that amount 300,000. Still leaving $2 million in the housing fund, depending on how others feel, but you know, I'll go either way with that.
Anybody else with clarifying questions, questions?
No, I I think I just have comments.
Okay, I have a couple of questions before we get to the comment section. So in this, I'm trying to understand. Are we are giving out money to people that live in the unincorporated county to cover their expenses? When our budget, I I I mean, I I look at this and I look at our budgets and I go, we are in a budget crisis in Half Moon Bay. I mean, should the county not at least be matching us 100% with everything that we're giving? I I don't understand why we are helping people that I I granted, we want to help everybody, like there's money to be thrown around all over the place, like I get it. But like our our job is to support people that live in Half Moon Bay. It's Half Moon Bay taxpayer money. Why are we supporting people that don't live in Half Moon Bay?
Sure, I'm happy to respond to that. And and of course, again, this is there, there's an opportunity for the council to provide direction. And and this are just our recommendations and staff, and I'll give you our thinking behind it. First, first and foremost, the question about the county match. As I mentioned, the county is paying, put 2 million, 12 million dollars towards this countywide. And if you do, City of Half Moon Bay population prorate that against the 12 million dollars, we're actually matching the $200,000 that would proportionately be allocated to the coast side. So that was part of the thinking of the $200,000 amount is it's a proportionate share of what the county is putting out towards renter supports. The idea of supporting people that don't live in Half Moon Bay really just came from our past use of funds for with Saint Vincent de Paul for coast side, what we call the coast side worker funding, which was you had to live in Half Moon Bay or work in Half Moon Bay and live on the coast side. So the idea was that we're supporting Half Moon Bay residents and also protecting people that work in Half Moon Bay and and are essential to the services that are provided here in Half Moon Bay. You know, you might have somebody who's working in a restaurant or auto repair shop that is really important to have remain on the coast side. And they just happen to live outside of the city limits. Again, I I don't think Victor and I feel overly strong about this, nor do the nonprofits. The idea was to just be able to have as much impact on the people who live and work in here in Half Moon Bay. And the only restriction would be to have to at least live on the coast side, but still be working in Half Moon Bay. Again, we're open to your your
No, no, it's good, good answer, good answer. That explain, that that does help a little bit.
I I want to add something to that. That is, when people are evicted, you know, homelessness is going to affect the entire coast side, right? And there's going to be a lot of homeless. There's going to be a lot of people, up to 40 million Americans are, you know, subject to eviction notices. And that's a lot of homeless folks. And California is not going to be absolved from that. We have, look at the high real estate prices we have. So the impacts are coast side wide. And when people become homeless, they tend to stay in the area they're in. You know, because of family and social connections and things like that. You know, it's an investment in in the community. It's it's really important.
I mean, I I hear that. I hear that. I just.
You know, Adam, I kind of agree with that. I mean, the reality is when people, people can't pay rent, they'll be homeless, you know, with their kids. And maybe they'll be on the streets of Half Moon Bay asking for money. And, you know, you're sitting there wondering, where do these homeless folks come from? Well, it came from the folks who maybe we could have, you know, lent a helping hand to proactively, you know what I mean?
I do.
It's kind of looking at systems, you know what I mean? They kind of interact. It's not so segmented. You know, someone might not actually live within the city limits, but it's going to affect the city and, you know, vice versa. So.
I do, we just have very limited resources, so we have to be, because it's, it's so easy. I I think at least it's the easiest thing is to throw money at things. Like, it's just so easy to do because it's just like, like, all right, well, we can just keep throwing money here and throwing money there. The harder part is kind of like reining it in and kind of figuring out what is our hierarchy of needs in terms of how we spend our money, because we just talked earlier, you know, I mean, some of this money could be used instead for housing, housing people that get COVID in 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 a community that, you know, is having hotspots that's that needs protection. And, you know, so we can't throw money at everything. And so we just, we have to kind of figure it out.
I agree, but at the same time, we are just earlier this evening, you know, we're talking about asking the county to really help us out, right?
Yes.
With testing folks, housing folks who need to be quarantined, which is going to be really expensive. I mean, we don't have all the social services.
No, that's the thing.
It's going to be the county's health workers coming across, et cetera. And because we have a large community out here, you know, we might be getting more than our fair share of those services. I'm just saying it kind of equals it out. You know, it's an emergency. It's not just throwing money at stuff. It's literally saving lives, you know?
No, I I hear you. I hear you.
You know, I I just don't think we would ever look back on this and feel like, you know, it was money wasted, you know?
I mean, it it is being taken directly from our from our affordable housing fund. So I'm curious, I mean, Deborah and Harvey have been kind of like leading that charge. I mean, are you guys okay having the money go from this? And I mean, this is an emergency. It makes sense. It's people that live here, da, 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 da. But just, you know, then we reduce from what we have in that other pie, which I'm totally okay with. But I mean, obviously, there's give and takes with everything. I just want to hear your guys' opinion on that.
My opinion is we're in an emergency.
Yeah.
And what was a priority is now an impossibility. We have not been able to build affordable housing. But right now, we do have the opportunity to help people stay in housing. And that is as important as building, more important than building new housing even. So I am absolutely for it. I would love to see the money come from someplace else because I hate seeing the Affordable Housing Fund shrink, but if that's where it has to come from, that's where it has to come from.
Okay, good, good perspective. And then Harvey, do you want to just weigh in on that as well, just to get?
I I I agree with Deborah. This is an emergency. The point of that fund was to help people get housed. And if people are not being evicted because of the help that comes from this fund, then it make, it's a perfectly legitimate use of the money. So I'm in with it.
Okay, good. Does anybody else, and and I'm totally okay, because I I like the different perspectives we're getting here, have any trouble with the fact that it's being used for, you know, people that don't necessarily live in Half Moon Bay, even though it's Half Moon Bay money per se? I get everybody's part of the coast side, and so like, we're still helping everybody. But do we want any direction there? Or are we just okay with the way it is in the staff report?
I like the fact that we are helping people that worked in Half Moon Bay and who happen to live on the coast side. I think that's limiting it as well as you can. We are not isolated because the city limits occur on one street and somebody happens to live on the street next to it. We are a coast side, so.
And their children go to school in Half Moon Bay.
Yeah.
Is it, is it that people have to work in Half Moon Bay? Is that in the information?
That's that's our recommendation, of course.
That's your recommendation.
We've got to put together the agreements, but our recommendation is if you don't live in Half Moon Bay, you need to live on the coast and work in a in a business in Half Moon Bay. I think that creates enough of a connection.
Yeah.
You know, I I may be limited, my recommendation may limit it more than other council members would like. So we're we're open, as I've said.
Okay, I I'm I'm okay with that tie in. I I don't know if everybody else is, and I can open it up to find out. But I like, I like a little tie in like that makes me feel better about using the taxpayer money to to do it. I'm just opening it up.
Just just one more point, you know, that people who are not housed, you know, people who have been evicted and are not housed, they can't isolate, you know, from COVID.
Right.
They're they're, they become a vector of disease out in the community. So that's another impact to consider, and that that impact is, you know, area wide. People may still go to work in Half Moon Bay. But they're evicted. And they have issues.
No, I hear you. No, it's a worthy cause. I'm excited it's here. I think we've got good use for it. I'm I'm all I'm all in. Yeah, and and I'm I'm not sure if we can take care of everybody that may get evicted, but I'm psyched to be able to provide some help and do our part the best we possibly can. You know, it's 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 rough out there right now.
I appreciate that you're asking those questions.
Yeah, just curious. Thank you. Uh, anybody else? Good on this one? Let's do it.
Any thoughts about the amount before we move forward?
Do we want to do more?
Oh, I think this staff report makes the point that, you know, we can come back more based on the need. They can come back again in the future. So this might be a good start. We can see, get a better picture of the actual need and then come back. So I don't think we necessarily have to increase it tonight, but I'm happy to join in with the council, whatever they want to do.
All right, cool. And before I I just, I'm so sorry, I forgot to do, I didn't check. Is there, is there any public comment on this?
I was just gonna, I mean, there's no public comment that I see.
Okay, I did, okay, I just checked here. Yeah, so I don't see any either. All right, good. Um, I'm I'm good with that. I'm good with coming back later if we need to. I I because absolutely this might get used up quickly. We might decide this is the best use of Affordable Housing Funds, given the emergency, all the different things. I mean, I I I'm absolutely, I'm good. So we have a motion?
Move for staff?
Second.
We moved in seconded. Councilmember Reddit?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Chair or Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
And Mayor Eisen?
Yes, yes.
Motion passes.
All right, what do we do about 3C and 3D council real quick? You guys want to do both of these? Do we, can we move one of them? Do we just continue? It's 11:50. Where where are we at? You guys want to keep going?
I'm good to go, but further, you know, I respect the wishes of others.
How quickly can we do it?
I mean, law enforcement annual updates kind of major and quarterly financial report, if to do it right, should take some time.
I would recommend that we move law enforcement's presentation just because I do think it's important and I think it bears some discussion like we've had on these other issues tonight.
It does.
Yeah. Move it to September?
Yeah, I don't think, and I agree that the quarterly financial will not take as much discussion. It'd be just good to understand it and and get perspective. Are you guys, are you guys are cool with that?
I'm cool.
Okay, I'm Stauw is probably not so happy about this.
Yes, oh, sorry. I actually, no, thank you. It actually works out. I'm the incident commander for the South Coast fires and I have to get back to that.
Awesome. Can you give us an update on what's happening there?
So the fire has grown in the last 24 hours. We have seven zones on the Zone Haven map system, if people are interested in looking at that. We have mandatory evacuations from Loma Mar to the Santa Cruz County line. And the fire has now jumped south of that. And we are doing evacuations in that entire South Coast region. And we're heading to Santa Cruz to help them out now.
No.
So I have to get back to to the fire and monitor the staff that I have from around the county. We have a mutual aid request and it's been a great response, so.
All right, we'll let you go. Thank you so much for staying aboard.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for, for, for give going for my haircut. I appreciate that. It's it's good.
The summer weather made me do it, so yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
All right.
Good night.
All right, let's go to item 3C emergence. And yeah, it's funny. Quarterly financial report.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor Eisen and council members. So Ken and I are here tonight to give you our fourth quarter financial update, but also give you a preview of what we hope will be our year end, our year end results. So so the agenda, which we'll run through and definitely leave time for questions, we're, we'll start with an overview of the fourth quarter report, talk about revenues and actually pull out TOT so that we can give you some very specific information about that. Talk about the expenditures for the last final quarter of 1920 and then look at our fund balances. And Ken will give you a preview of the financial outlook. So it's important to remember when we talk about fourth quarter of the previous fiscal year, it's very different, it's different than our year end report. Right now, we are finalizing fourth quarter, which means everything we spent in the last three months of the year. But in order for it to be final and go into the year end, we have various pending items, including our audit, which we are currently going through right now. We're still processing some fairly large 1920 invoices, fiscal year 1920 invoices. And of course, Ken and his team are working on year end accounting transactions. So all that will go towards the year end amount. What we're focusing on in the fourth quarter is obviously the fourth quarter of 1920. But but so to give, as of June 30th, we had 16 million that came in in revenue. Roughly, I'm rounding, obviously, and 16.9 million in expenditures through the fourth quarter. And we will talk a little bit about mid-year, which, as you remember, back in March, we brought to you a very, a very exciting mid-year revised budget that showed that we were actually on a very positive, positive movement. And then unfortunately, we had to come back on May 5th with some projections that were impact, that were COVID-19 impacts. So I am going to turn it over to Ken now and he'll walk you through the remainder of the presentation.
Lisa, hello, Mr. Mayor and all of council. As Lisa mentioned, there's a difference between the revised budget and the COVID-19 impacts that we estimated. Comparing what our numbers against our revised budget is not very helpful in this time. So we, this presentation has COVID-19 numbers that we projected. On May 5th, staff reported estimated COVID-19 impacts in the budget and what our finances. um, and what our finances would look like. Because TOT is such a big portion of our revenue stream, um, we took a very conservative approach. Um, working with consultants, seeing what other municipalities were picking and reading national articles, we came down to, uh, a revenue shortfall of about two point eight million. In response, uh, the city halted expenditures, uh, operating expenditures by about one point one million. And then capital expenditures with council approval of one point eight million. Um, with those adjustments, we figured that we could be okay going into fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one, um, without touching our general fund reserves. So here's our revenue summary, uh, through the fourth quarter. Um, so for TOT, um, considering COVID, we saw within the year at four point six million. We actually in the year at five, which is about four hundred thousand more than we initially anticipated. That's not too much of a surprise. Um, we thought the last few months of the year were going to be zero TOT. It's become apparent that we do have some people visiting us. Um, definitely not to the levels of last year, but we have been getting a little bit of TOT. Property taxes, uh, we didn't change that number, uh, for COVID. There was some concern that the county would allow deferment of payments. Um, but they did, they did, but only lasted for about a, a month, so we still got our property tax payment. We got a little bit more than what we had been budgeted for. Sales tax is probably the only surprise here. Um, we have about four hundred eighty-nine more than we initially anticipated. It is a little tricky, though, because we are, cuz we are receiving sales taxes on a bit of a delay. So these numbers are for sales transactions only through the first quarter. We don't fully know what, um, the second quarter, April, May, and June looks like yet. All other revenues.
I know, he froze.
That's okay. Um, we'll just, uh, talk amongst ourselves for a second. I can hear you guys. Um, and we'll just wait.
And I'm sorry, I can't even do the PowerPoint because he's controlling it.
That's okay. We got nothing but time.
Do you, do you have, if you have a PowerPoint, I can turn it off and you can turn it on if you wanted to, Lisa.
Um, sure, I could do that.
We can just give him, we can give him a second too. I don't.
Yeah.
Just give him a second.
No rush.
Yeah, and I do have it. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I already had it ready to go, so I wouldn't have to look through my screens. So does that mean he's completely gone?
Looks like it.
He may want, yeah, he might want to log back in, but yeah, he, you might want to just share.
Let me, okay. Yes, he's asking me if he dropped. Okay, and let me call it up here. Okay, oh, it's not, dang it, sorry. I gotta share my screen before I can actually go into slideshow.
Yeah.
Okay. And I may not be able to talk as articulately as Ken about the finances, but I will do my best.
There you go.
Yes, so, um, as he was finishing up, all other revenues, um, we projected a one, three point two million, and we actually came in again as uh, about five hundred thousand more than we expected. So, oh, and Ken just said he lost internet in the annex. So, um, so trans, so TOT update, we singled this out because as we, we've talked about, it's such an important part of our, our financial picture. Um, so we gave you some of the percentages that we've learned. And as you can see, June stands out. Weeks, um, and everything else kind of fell along what we expected, except for, I mean, well, we really expected zero. But April, May started to increase, but then June, we actually saw we were at forty percent of what we were last year. So that was actually surprising. And then, of course, for the next fiscal year, we've planned a thirty-five percent average for the entire year. Again, we, we plan on this, we're trying to be conservative so that we can plan accordingly with our budget and our finances. So going into our expenditures, um, as you can see, we were, we came in under three hundred and fifty thousand. A lot of this focused on contract services. As you can see, we really tried as a city to kind of scale back where we needed to, and contract services was one of the things that we really worked on trying to, um, kind of cut services for our departments. And then, as you could see, everything else, we tried to end the year very conservatively. The two things that still ended up being a little over were souring benefits and miscellaneous expense, which actually does include the stone pine deposit. So miscellaneous did include the stone pine deposit. Um, so effect on our fund balances. We are very careful in how we word this, and we do, we like to use the word trending because nothing is concrete until we get those audit results, our audit results done, and the CAFR is done. But we are trending towards a two point six million surplus after the year is finalized. The trend, as you all know, um, was a result of halting operating expenditures, delaying capital projects, and getting better revenues than we planned. So, now, once finalized, um, and this will probably be mid-year, um, January, Mar- March is when we come back to you with our mid-year. But once finalized, that money goes into the unassigned balances. And just, you know, as a reminder, unassigned is non-reserve funds. Um, and right now, our reserves are fully funded, which is good news for us. So what do we have to look forward to as we, as we are now into the second month in twenty twenty-one? Um, of course, revenue performance is still uncertain, but we're definitely in a better position than we expected to be. We will continue to monitor TOT and sales tax, um, and make sure that we pay attention to any of the trends upward or downward. Our consultants are constantly sending us information, um, to make sure that we're fully aware of what's going on, not only in our area, but around the state. And then, of course, due to the various uncertainties surrounding this, surrounding COVID, um, we are, as a finance staff, recommending, not recommending any expenditure adjustments until we come back to you mid-year. And of course, our recommendation is that you receive the report and also the update. And that's it.
Excellent. Very good news.
Yes.
I mean, seemingly.
We're, we're going in the right direction. I think we, go ahead.
So, so I just wanna, I just wanna say, so from, from my perspective, from a, you know, um, a hotel professional, uh, uh, having a sense of how the TOT is working. So I, my, I have a strong belief that the summer overall, and granted, this is like, you know, July, August, um, September, October even possibly, uh, will come in decent, uh, decently stronger than we expected. Where I'm nervous still is once the summer ends officially, like, you know, right now, um, technically speaking, this is where, and we heard this when we talked to the TOT people, this is where group business comes. So this is, the transient business ends, the transient business had much more upside than any of us thought it would have, so I'm really excited about that momentum. But now we're going into the group season. And, and the group season is still relatively nonexistent. The transient business might buoy us a little bit still, and might be, still have some upside from what we forecast, but I don't suspect it will be that much above. But I think we will keep the upside that we got from the first few months. I just don't believe that that'll be the trend all the way throughout the entirety of the year. So I just don't want to get too overly optimistic about, uh, the first couple of months of what we may see from a TOT and think that's the trend for the whole year. Um, because, uh, uh, the business transitions right now.
No, exactly. You're exactly right, and that's why we feel it's very important for us to continue to watch it, and why we're also not recommending any actions being taken right now. Be, because, as you said, we know that a lot of the business during the off-season is groups, and, you know, conferences and team retreats, and so it's still left to be seen how that is going to be turning out in the fall.
Oh, very good. Other council?
Yeah, I, I was wondering if, um, anybody on staff had been talking to, I know you talk to the Ritz on and off, but in particular about the, uh, group meeting situation, but how they see it. Are they doing anything to accommodate COVID so that they can still have groups coming?
Um, I don't know, Bob and Math, or Matthew, have you had, um, I know that right now they're not getting the bookings that they would normally get during this time, that, uh, a lot of people are having their, their conferences, their team retreats online. Um, I know there's a few conferences that have come through our office, I mean, not in this area, but that are all now going online for this year. So I think that's what's impacting our local hotels, that businesses are just choosing not to do it in person.
I see that Chris Lynn is still on the, the meeting as an attendee. Maybe she could.
Yes, oh, she just raised her hand.
Before she comes to speak, I'll just add, in the conversation I had with the general manager, which was about three weeks ago, um, before the council voted to, um, to put the ballot measure on, I, I did not get that, that level of detail from him, um, in terms of their situation. Matthew and I, uh, have reached out to Kevin and said we want to meet with him again in a few weeks. And so when we meet with him in a few weeks, we'll, we'll, uh, ask him more questions about, um, about how their business is doing, and try to get that, those kind of answers.
Hi. Um, yeah, so I would say, um, group travel is definitely going to be the slowest to come back. Um, because, uh, like was said, so many corporations have just flat out made the decision that they don't want to deal with the possibilities of their attendees getting COVID or anything related, so. Um, so even if a hotel was given permission from county, state, or whomever to do events of a certain size, those corporations aren't going to do them anyway. Um, and especially now with so many big conferences and whatnot going virtual, if they find long-term success in going virtual and it cuts their costs, then that's something we're gonna have to contend with also. Um, because I've also heard rumblings already of people trying out virtual events to see how they work for the future of that event for the rest of its life. So there's a lot of hurdles when it comes to group events that we're gonna have to overcome. Um, but we, as a part of the BID, are still gonna go to conferences um, that cater to event planners to hopefully woo them back with our amazingness and our outdoor facilities and all of that good stuff, so hopefully.
They want good after-hours.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Uh, so we will do our level best to, uh, bring back those conferences, but it's going to be a long, hard battle.
It makes sense. Personal safety and, you know, one hotel room for one or two people and hanging out on the beach. There's real difference in a conference with a bunch of people in a room, no matter how hard, you know, you try and keep it safe, it's tougher, so, um, and you're right, companies don't want the added liability themselves, right, so. See how that ends up. Good, the budget's great. Do you have a motion or what?
Exactly. Go, Robert, do it.
Yeah, let's see, um.
Just say staff, I recommend staff.
Yeah, for staff, I moved that we received the update, fiscal year financial report. How's that sound? Any one second?
We have a second?
Second.
Excellent.
Roll call?
Yeah.
Uh, council member Reddick?
Yes.
Council member Rarback?
Yes.
Council member Penrose?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
And Mayor Eisen.
Yes, and I just wanna, I just wanna thank them as well for obviously doing the work, but also keeping things in perspective because there is positive numbers there, and I just, I'm, I'm psyched that we're not very quickly reading into that and going in a particular direction and being safe in what we're, what we're doing moving forward, so very appreciative, um, of staff, so thank you.
Yeah, very happy to see the level of analysis that we're doing around the numbers, not just putting the numbers out there, but, you know, helping explain it. That's really, that's really good.
Well, Ken is the king of analysis.
Uh, okay, I'm gonna then skip item three D. I'm gonna go, cuz we're gonna do that at the next council meeting, so I guess we're gonna, what do I call that, forward it?
Continue.
Continue.
Continue, thank you, that's the word, continue. And then now we'll move on to commission and committee updates.
Let's pass on that.
Okay, good, I'm just gonna assume there weren't any. Uh, future discussion, possible agenda items?
Wait a minute, Jill is still on. She might want to talk about the planning commission and the LC.
That she's working on currently.
Taking.
Sorry about that.
I, no, we'll, we'll be quick. I enjoyed having the meeting on while I've been getting ready for Tuesday. So, yeah, we're, we're looking forward to seeing our very full Zoom room at, uh, planning commission hearing Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, seven o'clock PM. Uh, Bridget will be there, um, taking care of us, and our commissioners have been working really hard. Uh, City Attorney's Office and, uh, her staff have been incredibly supportive, and we're just, um, we're sorry, you're gonna get a late packet on this. We're, we're gonna be working night and day to get this thing polished up for them, and then we will see you, council, on September twenty-ninth.
I'm hearing really good things.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so glad to hear that.
I'm only hearing good things and about the great work that staff and the subcommittee has done and how professional it's been delivered professionally, so.
Good.
Good on you.
That's great. We are meeting with stakeholders every day, all the way to the end, and we will keep doing it after the planning commission, um, leading up to your meetings. We're happy to do it. Thanks.
Great.
So these sessions have been great, too. We had forty-two people or more that were in attendance, not including the twelve panelists, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
They're waking up to it.
All right, so, any future discuss, thanks Jill, uh, and thanks Debbie for bringing that up. Uh, any future discussion, possible agenda items?
I had some earlier, but now I forgot.
Good. Forgotten. Uh, any city council reports? All right, I would like to adjourn the meeting of eight eighteen, two thousand twenty at twelve fifteen AM. People, see if you can go to sleep and, uh, get a restful night. Um, and, uh, thank you so much for your time. Great discussions tonight, I thought. So appreciate everybody, uh, spending so much time and, uh, keeping it going.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, all.